We didn't get started. We had to go home by six grand club. Hey, John, do I need to come over there? Welcome, everybody.
Do you remember Mr. Jensen and I love it here? You're not gonna be him if you keep it up.
Thanks, everybody, for coming this morning to meet with us. Doug is excused. His sweetheart Kathleen had some rotator cuff schedule for, I think, next week. They bumped it up until today, so he had to call him back out. And then Bruce is someplace in the world. We don't know.
Florida.
He's a trout.
Florida.
Florida.
Between him and Jan, I think they've visited ninety-two countries and twelve counties. So we'll excuse those two days. Richard, welcome. Thanks for coming up. Terry and Bridget, thanks for coming and being with us. And if you want to do some more formal introductions, whatever later, that would be awesome.
Okay, that will make your screen.
Thank you for coming up and spending some time with us. I'll tell you, I don't know, we've known each other seven years. I think I met you after being on board about two days. One of the kindest guys in the world, just one of the nicest people ever. Just a couple of real quick things. If I put my glasses on, I'll make sure we get the right dates. Tuesday is our Christmas tree jubilee with the foundation.
Is that Tuesday?
Tuesday, yes, sir.
We may have a table.
It's too late to back out now, buddy?
I got my invitation. Said table twenty-six, but they may have it too short. I didn't know it was Tuesday. I thought it was Wednesday.
I think we have two tables. It's Tuesday night, opens at five, and then dinner's at six-thirty. Okay, and I think...
Got a table for...
We've got two tables.
Yep, we've got two tables for some...
I was gonna tell the numbers on the...
Yeah.
Have you got an email? You got an email?
Yeah.
Good.
Emily sent it to me.
I read my emails.
We'll get together for a little Christmas dinner Friday, the eighth of December, at Ruby River. On the nineteenth of December, we have the legislative breakfast down at the Davis Technology campus.
Why did I think it was in Caseville? Is it in Layton?
It's at the camp, Weaver campus.
Right off of, right, right, same road, Hiller, Carroll, United Hiller.
You start going up the hill a little bit, it's to the south.
Turn left, turn left.
I don't know where I got that case of...
That's because DTC, you probably thought, well...
Turn right, turn right on one ninety to go down and left.
They changed it, okay, because I'm like, I swear, I remember thinking, oh, I have to drive all the way to Caseville.
Down there was, down there was last year.
I prefer to leave to Caseville.
Let's see, we also have a board meeting. Everybody please remember that. We have our USBA conference the first week of January. And how's everybody doing on their boards or their level four?
I'm on level one.
Are you? Well, you're kind of in...
Well, that's why you have to. Yeah. You just have no one to drive you.
You completed, you completed, I completed.
I didn't.
You're on level one.
I noticed Jeff... I've got two still.
Okay, I noticed Jeff Stevens was still on the...
Doug, Bruce is done.
Megan said she'd... I said, this makes me nervous. Jeff is still on there. She said, sorry.
Jeff and Lila were out at the house over the night, and I was gonna tell him he was still on the list for level four. So any other questions on those few things?
So the eighth is our Christmas at Ruby River?
That's correct, six o'clock.
Okay, that sounds great. I do have one more thing to add to this. Those of you who've been around a while...
I was getting to you, buddy. For this?
No.
Oh.
George K. Baum, who was now, is now steeple. They always do a little holiday thing downtown. You go down there and, who's ever been to that?
What's this?
They have tons of awesome food. It's free. And you go down there, you can overlook the lights at Temple Square, and you can rehome family, extend a family.
What is this?
It's the same time.
It's an open house. It's a, it's a December seventh. So I have these two guys.
So it's at fifteen South Main Street on the fourth floor, Suite 420.
Yeah.
And we also have Bardee Wranglers that night if folks would like to...
I thought they didn't exist anymore.
Bardee, not RJ.
Not RJ, this is Bardee.
These are the folks out of Drangle. They do a good show.
Where's that at?
At Roy High.
Okay.
And there's a...
I will, since you quit giving me this one.
I think, I think Deb and I are scheduled for four or five things that night, so, but I think we'll be at Bardee Wranglers.
Yeah.
And Bardee as well.
I just know that if, like, if you took your, if you took your family and extended family and all your friends, they're...
Are these the guys that do...
Our bonds.
Our bonds, okay.
December's fun to go down and visit with everybody if you...
Yeah, it's just an option. You're not expected to go. It's just an option. December seventh is also my anniversary.
I think it's...
You probably already know what your wife has.
Maybe you ought to pay for dinner.
Call it dinner.
Pearl Harbor Day. We got to go to Pearl Harbor Day.
Pearl Harbor Day.
I taught history. He'll take Lori to the, to the social and political...
You gotta call that, as I said, call, go to the Hodor's, however you spell that. Here's your dinner, and you're headed by. Take two more chicken home tonight. You're in good for tonight.
I'm on it. I'm on it.
Thanks, Robert. While you're right in the center of attention, why don't you go with this quick little... Chart you made up that was kind of interesting.
Is there a packet? Did you have a packet for me?
Robert's about three deep in there, three deep.
Okay. I thought I would see where we're at on the rotation of board members because the election, your, it's, or, kind of files coming up. So I made this cool chart. It's a, you can see it's a, it's a legal site notebook. And I summarized the last five years. And if we look at District One, we had four seats open. That's that first column. And in District One, just going across, Dean O'Born had no opponent. Then, two years later, two thousand and eighteen, he had no opponent. And then, two years later, twenty-two, Kelly Larson...
I did have an opponent, but he was scared of me, and he withdrew.
And he withdrew. That is true.
I think that's probably true.
It was, and that is true. You did have an opponent. But when you look up the official ballot on the website, it says no opponent.
I can pull that.
Yeah, he pulled out. Okay. Then if you look at District Two, District Two, Mitzi Kawaguchi won in two thousand and fourteen. Then, four years later, Jan Burrell and Marsha Gowan had a contested race. And as far as, as far as, there was, there was an open seat, and Jan was elected. And then, then Jan was reelected with no opponent last year. And I want to point out that this has been a pleasure to work on this board. So you people from the USBA, we've had this wonderful board. You know, I hear horror stories from my fellow business administrators about these loose cannons and these crazy people on boards and stuff. We haven't had any. And, and I was, when there's an open seat, like we had when Mitzi and Dean stepped down, you get nervous. And, and I'm grateful that Jan and Kelly are not weirdos.
That's how you feel, Robert.
That's how I feel. Okay, then District Three...
You put the sound of the notes over there. It's a good word, Deb.
It is recorded. It is recorded.
Okay. And then, in District Three, Brent Richardson had Challenger in that, in that, two thousand and fourteen. He won. And then, unfortunately, he passed away, and Bruce was appointed. And as an appointee, the next time that is up for election, you have to run for election, which he did, and no opponent. Bruce, also this last time, had no opponent. District Four, Rick Pabaro won in two thousand and sixteen with no opponent. Unfortunately, Rick passed away.
Yeah, 'cause now you're stuck with me.
Or it's...
He'd be farther ahead if Rick was still around.
Not true. You're great. Anyway, Rick was, or Paul was appointed, but then he faced a challenge from Stacy Paylon, his first time up for election. And he, he won, and then he saw no opponent the last time, and he's up for election this next time. Then in District Five, Doug Hurst had no opponent in eight sixteen, no opponent in twenty. And that seat, Doug's up for reelection in, coming up in next November. Then in District Six, Janice challenged the incumbent, Scott Hanson, and Janice won. And in nineteen races of the last five years, Janice is the only one to unseat a current incumbent. So that's quite, that's quite a feat.
Janice.
And then, then Janice had no opponent in the next time she ran. And this last time she ran, she had an opponent, and she, she was elected, reelected. Then in District Seven, the last district, John Ritchie had no opponent. John Ritchie had no opponent, and he's up for reelection again. And you can kind of see, this next time, three of the four are up for, are open, are up for election. We have veterans in every one of them, Paul Witherson, Doug Hurst, and Joan. I have a little summary chart at the top. It's kind of interesting. If you look at the top, we've had a total of nineteen races. Fourteen were non-contested, and five were contested. And I don't know if that's typical of other boards, but we've done very well because we just have solid people. And people, people are, I think, like what the boards do. There's twelve that has no, no opponent. The incumbent was elected. One had no opponent. The appointed incumbent was elected. One had no opponent. There was no seat. The new member was elected. That was McKelly. There are two that had contested seats. The incumbent elected over the challenger. Then there was one that had a contested seat. The appointed incumbent was elected. One had a contested seat. The challenger was elected over the incumbent, and one had a contested seat. No incumbent, two new challengers. That was Janice. And Doug, Marsha. The reason why I thought, I just got carried away making this chart. It was fun. But the, the reason why it's important is because when we're gonna go sell bonds again in January, and the rating agencies, we have to give a rating presentation. And one of the questions they ask is, what's your board like? You know, what's the nature of your board? Believe it or not, boards have an impact on our credit. Volatile boards are not good for credit. Stable, steady boards are good for credit by Moody's and Fitch and Standard and Borders. And so, that's one of the reasons we have a triple A with Fitch and a double A plus with Moody's, which are very high ratings because we've had a solid board and continue to have a solid board. And so I just want to point that out and express my appreciation.
That took a lot of work. Thank you so much.
I thought it was kind of cool, though, to see it all visually.
Was that on the clock or off the clock?
Oh, I was on the clock, baby. Yeah, and then, there's, is there no seat in there?
No, so I'm gonna let, we're gonna let President Witherson take that one with certain board members.
Yeah, very good.
So we're good.
Because the filing for the next election is not in March.
It's in January.
It's in January.
Well, and actually, two years ago, it was in February.
Was it?
Mm-hmm. They pushed it back last year to February, and then pushed it up again.
Also, I went down there to the county the other day, and I got information on the elections to make sure we were accurate. I taught reelection officials. And I don't know if you noticed, when you walk in outside, we have the State of Utah flag flying. Because the old State of Utah flag will not be our flag all come January one. And I have a flag guy, and the new flag is awesome. The old flag was dumb. There's about thirty, there's about thirty-six states that had a flag that looked exactly like ours with their state seal on a blue field. And you could tell if you were in the justice, you could see California's flag. Sorry, I'm on a rant. But you, you know, and now you will be able to know that's Utah's flag, you know? And so, we've got it outside, and we're ordering one for the boardroom. It's not here yet.
Does your boardroom ran out yet?
I have a couple of points. Is it not March when the new flag takes effect? I don't think it's January one.
It might be March, but it's coming.
I think it's March.
It's coming.
And I have really strong feelings in favor of the old flag.
We will talk later.
I think that the new flag is an effort broadway to erase history.
We'll talk later.
And as a former teacher, I find this offensive.
We'll talk later. Anyway, that's, that's all, that's all I got, President. Sorry, I took so much time.
Well, so much for the, didn't want.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, a few years ago, we was at a convention, and Superintendent Stevens and Bruce and I were sitting at a table during a presentation, and there was a, there was a board setting not far away from us. And they were about fisticuffs.
Really?
And we were just kind of laughing because, I mean, this is the worst I've seen in history.
This is good.
We'll take it outside.
Oh, you saw the Congress, now?
Robert, I'll take you to lunch.
Oh, hey, you're on. Okay, I think the old flag is awesome.
Taste is mine.
Can I ask you one second about these visiting dignitaries?
Please.
I just have to say...
He doesn't mean dignitaries.
That's like way over spaced.
Love that. Right. They're not here yet.
I just have to say what amazing people they are and how they continue to work for unity and strength and success in our public ed system. And I'm so grateful for my association for you, with you. And I'm so proud of the board who's working on their certification and getting there. We're gonna have a hundred percent, yes.
Wow.
Nice. That's wonderful.
We're gonna hang our heads high at the, we're gonna hold our heads high at the convention.
Great. That would be great.
Awesome.
Impressive.
Yes, yes.
Richard, we appreciate you coming up today, and we'll just go ahead and turn some tunnel to you, and you can run as you see fit.
Okay, well, great.
If you get out of line, Robert will probably scream you. We have facial people between the...
We're gonna run out of time, too.
And we will do that. And I would just like to say, we appreciate Janice serving on our Board of Directors. She's been there, represents you folks really well. And, and so, thanks, Janice, for the time that you've been on there and your work and service and everything else.
Thank you.
Has been appreciated and recognized, the great work that you do. If I could, I would just like to, to mention about the filing date again, because if it's, you know, you two plus Doug, make sure that you file, because that's the first part of January. So go in, file, before you come down to the conference in January. Because the deadline will be passed if you wait till after that. So that's my message that I give to everybody, is go in and file, and then come on down to the conference. So, yeah, so that, I'm sure is gonna, you know, come awful quick, and will probably fool a few people. And they'll miss that deadline date. And for the three of you, I know everybody would hate to see that happen, so please, please make sure that you file by that date. I think, you know, you've already heard the introduction about Bridget and Terry. And that we just appreciate being here today. As you know, Bridget is the current president of USBA until January, and then Terry will become the president of USBA in January. And so, I'm just happy to have them here. It's always great when I bring some board members with me to this kind of a training, because then you hear it from them. You know, they have been there in the trenches. They, they know what it's like to be a board member and the challenges that you have. And, and so it's been really effective for us at the association to have some of our board members come and be able to be the ones who are gonna do the training. So anyhow, I'm gonna turn it over to them. Bridget is gonna first talk about the dignity index, and then we are gonna jump right into this PowerPoint here. And I'll just...
Well, thank you so much for inviting us. You know, it's already been so much fun before we had even started. I can tell that you guys have a lot of fun together as a board, so that's great. That's great to see. I just, again, I have to say how grateful we are for, for Janice. She does represent me well, and has done such a good job on our Board of Directors. And we've become very close friends through USBA, so, love Janice, so, thank you for what you do. We had a request, and it came from Janice, so I guess it came from the whole board, to talk about the dignity index. And this is something that has been a focus for me and for our Board of Directors this entire year. And we just think it's such a great concept. And I'm going to refer you to the website as well, and then we'll talk about what dignity index means. And it's dignityindex.us, which I believe is on purpose, because this applies to all of us. And basically, the, what the dignity index promotes is that all of us, in any position that we hold, treat everyone that we come in contact with with dignity, kindness, and respect, even if we disagree with them. And I'm sure you're well aware of, of what started happening severely, I would say, during the pandemic and the vitriol and the anger and the hate that was going on on, at school board meetings and throughout our country. And we just really believe in this concept that everybody deserves that dignity and respect, no matter what their beliefs are. And so there's just, and this index is, and, and I'm gonna pass this out, but when you look at the website, you'll be able to see that. And it's, it's a way that you can look at speech or speeches or a presentation and, and look at it and say, hey, at the top of the index, it is, and, and I'll give you a second to look at this. And, and it's, you have to be careful when you are judging someone's speech, that you're not saying, oh, my gosh, they're, they're terrible. I'm not even going to listen to that. But you can objectively look at the language that they're using, body language in some, some instances, and say, you know, I think they fall on a one right here, or maybe an eight. So at the top of the index, and what we would strive for, and I won't read all of them to you, just a few. What we would strive for is that each one of us is born with inherent worth, so we treat everyone with dignity, no matter what. And that's what we strive for as board members, as USBA officers, and our Board of Directors. And I truly believe that it's what our, not only school board members need and educators, but everyone in our country. I think it's so needed right now. If you, if you go down to the bottom, so much of this has been going on, number one on the index, they're not even human. It's our moral duty to destroy them before they destroy us. And that's kind of where the rhetoric had gone. And like I said, we're striving for number eight to do this. And so you can take a look at that index. There are amazing people that have represented this concept. Tammy Pfeifer, and we've worked closely with Tammy, and she was the education advisor to Governor Herbert. And Tim Schreiber, which you may or may not know, and, and many others, Boyd Madison. Many people are involved in this effort. And you can go on the index and actually take the pledge to, to try to do this in your life. And I just wanted to maybe go over really quickly about some of the skills that are connected with this. Be curious, not furious. So if there's a disagreement, you know, try to find out where they're coming from. Use language that invites dialogue. Regulate the debate. When you start to get upset, pause and take a breath before speaking. And this is a good one for me, because I do, I do get wound up. And so, take a breath and pause before speaking. It's a good idea. Listen to hear, not to respond. Really listen to the other person and try to understand what they're saying. Challenge ideas. Don't attack people. And I love this one. Just like, great example, we just saw here. They disagree on the flag, but they didn't attack each other, and they're going to talk about it. So that's a great example. You are doing this right now. That was wonderful. Acknowledge knowledge. When someone else makes a logical or interesting point, acknowledge their point. Build up rather than tear down. Advocate, explain, build up your idea rather than just attacking others' ideas and/or dehumanizing people. So I'll just read the pledge to you, and you can go look at it on the website and decide if you would like to join us. "As an American who knows and loves my country, I am convinced there is no America without democracy. No democracy without healthy debate, and no healthy debate without dignity. Therefore, I pledge to do more to treat others with dignity, not contempt." So we have, Utah School Board Association has partnered with the dignity index. And their logo is on our website, and we're working to get their logo on, on our website. And we are going to have cards like this made up for our annual conference. But I just had some of these, and I, I thought that I would bring some of these to pass out. And I won't read all these either, because you can read them, but these are dignity index pickup lines. I love these. "When things get hot, what can you say to defuse contempt?" Can you tell me more about that? I want to hear what you think. Can you explain that to me? Thanks for talking with me. A lot of folks won't talk to people they disagree with. If we talk for a little longer, I think we'll find out we share some values. So I, I just love those and have tried to use these. And at each of our Board of Directors' meetings, we've shared when we've tried really hard to use this dignity index and the outcomes. And the outcomes are usually much better than if you had not used this principle. So I invite you to go to the website, hear all about it, and keep doing what you're doing. And, and I think that we can really make a difference for public education.
Those were quotes. You said be curious, not furious. Is that on the website?
Yes, yes.
I just went to the website. It's pretty cool. It's pretty, pretty interactive.
It is a great website.
Well, and, sorry, go ahead.
Is it possible, because when we have this, the front side, can maybe Pam give us the backside, because that, be curious, we...
Yeah, I started writing, but I could write faster.
And it is, all of it's on the website. But, and we are going to be making up these cards with just a little bit from our standards on these, on these cards. And we'll be passing those out at the conference, the annual conference in January. But it's something that you could discuss as a board as well. And talk about how you can use these, just like we've done in our Board of Directors' meetings. And really, I just really personally feel that it's what our country needs right now, to bring us back together and bring that dignity up instead of the contempt that has been so prevalent, so.
Is there, is there any problem with covering the other side of that?
Nope.
Okay, I'll run that out for her.
Not at all, not at all.
And we can post whatever we want.
Janice, just recording and taking notes right here.
Sure, yeah.
Jerry can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get a copy. We'll get a copy for you on the break. I'll grab one for you.
Yeah. So, yeah. Go, go to the website. It's all on there. You know, you could even, Tammy is even willing to come out to districts and present as well. So, and she's working on more and more things, too, so.
I think it's so positive.
It is. It's, it's a good thing. What was your question, sorry?
My hope is that she's doing that. Is she one of the main speakers at the conference?
She's going to be, we've had her present last year, so I don't know if you had an opportunity to hear her last year. But, so we are tagging her come to our conference again, but she is presenting at the National School Board Association Conference in April as well.
Any worry?
So, yes, yes. And she is, and she is... She is willing to come to any district also. So this is spreading. This is spreading. I was just at a meeting in Salt Lake City, and she had come and met with their board and individual educators in their district. And it's, it's great, and it is expanding, so the more people that can get on board, the, the better our communication will be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And so, our, our purpose today is, so you all are working on Power Up already, so we can skip that part. Roles and responsibilities of being school board members and board member superintendent relationships are, are key to what we do as boards, as you know. It's important for us to stay in our lanes. We, as, as a board in cash, we have a member who is resigning. So we just did interviews last night with three applicants to, to fill that position. And it was interesting to, because one of the questions that we asked our applicants was, what do you see as the, as a board member role as part of a, a school board? What does a, what does a member do? And only one of them could answer very well, and that was a gentleman who has a lot of business experience. So he has experience with Board of Directors. So he has experience with board of directors and administration of large corporations. But the other two have no experience with that. So it's interesting how important it is for us to learn those roles. And then communication and building trust. These are our principles of effective governance. And you have seen this before on the backup of our standards. This is what we are supposed to do legally from code, what we're supposed to do. So you can see this on the USBA website.
And Terry, I actually copied some of these. Just if you are a visual person, you can, or a paper person, you can have those. If not, you can throw them away and you can get them on the website.
Okay, so embedded in this PowerPoint are some, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Andy, the board member who.
Is that the new board member for me?
Um, yes.
Yes.
I'm just recently remembered.
Yeah, Andy's really interesting and he's super fun to watch. So this is the, we'll show this video. It's about a minute and a half, maybe two after the game. And afterward, we'll have, we'll have a little discussion about that.
Hopefully this will work.
Just make sure the sound working. Nope. We'll play, huh? Nope.
There, right there.
There, okay.
Oh, where'd that go? Boom, dog. Did you see that last shot? Man, that was fantastic. Man, there's nothing like winning a game in the final second. And I love it when the crowd gets behind our team finally.
I know, but I almost feel sorry for that poor guy who had the ball stolen away from him.
Oh, yeah, but we all get over things like that. You know, I'm just glad that the four of us could get together and go to the game. It it's nice to get to visit outside of a board meeting. Now, I feel like I know each of you a little bit better.
Yeah, no angry parents, no pressure, no tough decisions. We really need to do this more often.
But you know, we probably would have lost that game if Mark wouldn't have come back in so pumped up. Did you notice that? Did you notice the assistant coach giving him that pep talk? I gotta tell you, I'm worried about Dr. Wilson's proposal that we cut three assistant coaches next year. I don't know.
Well, I'm just glad we won.
Yeah, but the point is, if we cut the assistant coaches, there might not be anybody to motivate Mark like that. I don't know if this position is one of the ones Dr. Wilson wants to cut. But I'm opposed to it if that's the case.
I'm with Andy on this. If we're going to have to make cuts, and we are going to, I don't think those are the positions that I would take out of the budget. I mean, surely we've got some office staffers or some cafeteria workers that can go first.
Okay, nobody likes cafeteria food anyway. I know Ted wants us to leave it all to Dr. Wilson, but we all know that's a mistake. Bill, you agree with me, don't you? And Monica and Hazel, what do you think?
It's going to come down to instructional staff or non-instructional staff cuts. He said we needed to find about $150,000 in payroll savings, didn't he? We could find that with non-instructional staff. That's what I'd be for.
Then I think we ought to go to Dr. Wilson and tell him that we want the cuts from non-instructional staff, period. I'd volunteer to do it. But Bill, you've got a lot better relationship with him. Would you tell him what we've decided?
Are we even supposed to be talking about this? I mean, after all, it's not a meeting. And neither Ted nor Dr. Wilson, not to mention the cafeteria staff, has any idea that we're even thinking about this. I I don't feel good about it.
Oh, come on, Hazel. We here are a majority. We know what we want. We just saw more evidence tonight that we're right. Now, it comes down to us to decide the basis of how the cuts are made. It is our policy. And we want the cuts to be made to non-instructional staff, right?
I do agree with that.
And and I don't know why we just don't go to Dr. Wilson and tell him what we want. You think about it, we're going to save all that embarrassment of us sniping at his proposal in a public meeting. And it'll save us a whole lot of time.
I don't know about that, Andy.
Oh, I can see the endless conversation we're going to have at that board meeting, huh? Ted on one side, the rest of us on the other. We're doing Dr. Wilson a favor if we decide now. So he doesn't waste time preparing a presentation we're going to shoot down anyway.
It just doesn't seem right for us to be making this decision in a basketball game.
Hazel, we are the board. This is a policy decision and a majority of us set the policy, not the board president, not the superintendent. We do not have to defer to them. You know, it is okay to stand up for what we believe, huh?
So what happened there? From social to meeting. Went from social to open source. Sorry, sorry. I don't know if we can swatch it again. That was hard to watch.
It was hard to watch.
It was hard to watch. Why was it hard to watch? You're so wrong.
We don't do any of that.
That's good. That's very good.
Yeah, that's terrible.
But the the part that was nice to me to see is they could go to the game together.
Sure.
That that's legit.
Yeah.
Because we're often in the same place at the same time.
Yeah.
So that was nice to see that there can be a majority present without it.
We're going to do it at bar D.
We are.
And so as you guys, as we go and talk, we're also going to be mixing with school staff as well as city. So the mayor council will be there. As we're talking, I guess the caution would be that we're not doing that.
Yeah.
Or if we are, then Hazel stands up.
Can you, I mean, should they not have talked about any of that?
Uh, they can talk. They just can't make a decision.
Yeah, good point. Because it's important as we talk about things or make decisions that we we understand everyone's views. And talking with people or talking with other board members about, how do you feel about and how do you feel about is one thing. But saying, we should be doing this or we want this without the other three board members there and then not in an open public meeting, that can get us in hot water pretty fast, especially in this cultural impasse. So that side polling is probably not, yeah, that's it. But we definitely want to still have social activities together because that gives us, that helps us become closer and understand each other's, where we're coming from in different ways than we would be if we only interacted in board meetings, in open public meetings. And I appreciate that because we have, on our board, we don't always agree. We don't always all agree. And we can do that safely in a board meeting because we interact outside of board meetings and and are good friends because we do social things together. So anyway, on to the next one. Maybe. I might have to stick up the video. Sorry, you guys, these, it's okay.
There's another one.
Still Andy?
Yeah, still Andy's the problem.
Andy, glad I ran into you.
Hey.
Want to know what's going on with the school board? Has the entire board gone nuts?
I'd be surprised if we have. Why would you say that? Or is that just your way of supporting your local school board?
You know very well what I'm talking about. How can the school board stand by and let Hank Fisher be suspended without giving him a reason why? Everybody knows he keeps the high school students in line, no drugs, no alcohol. We won't find another principal like him.
Hey, nobody hates us more than I do. And the the entire board sees it the same way.
Well, if that's the case, then let's put him back on his job and move on. The community's in an uproar. Nobody knows what's going on or even why Hank's been suspended, not even Hank.
Hank knows why he was suspended.
He said he didn't. How do you know he does?
Because we discussed it in closed executive session.
Oh, so why was he suspended? We're not supposed to talk about it outside of a closed session, okay? But there is a good reason for his suspension. Well, I can't see any reason to let a man like Hank go. He was accused of sexual harassment.
Oh, boy.
By three teachers. Hey, 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 don't tell anybody you heard that from me.
Right.
You know I won't tell anyone.
Yep, sure was.
That one seems pretty self-explanatory.
That one hit hard dollars to home for us because we walked through the the suspension of a.
Yes.
Oh, you just had that experience, you simply.
Yes, and it's, it's a hard situation.
We're working through one of those ourselves. I'm a, I'm a coach.
Yeah, we have that going on in Davis District as well. So so those close meetings, we really have to be careful not to dispose anything that goes on in those close meetings.
And I have not heard nothing. But from our experience, I believe this site's done very well, even though there's been a tremendous amount of pressure to find out why in a very highly, I don't know what you call area that is coming from. I mean, it's part of our district. So I think we've done very well and has go off. I have not heard nothing leaked out. I don't know that at all. But as far as that goes.
Yeah, guys have done a good job with that.
Yes, and it's tough.
It is a hard one.
Isn't it great, though, that, this is one of the things I love about serving on a school board is that when situations like this happen, I can say, I'm one seventh of one. I'm not one of seven. And I'm keeping the one whole. I'm not going to be the weak link in that, in that, in keeping that that one group whole, that one board whole. Because it, and and it's obvious that you all trust each other, that you're you're all going to keep your mouths closed about what happens in executives' closed sessions. Because it just takes one, one time, right? And the state board is dealing with some of that kind of stuff themselves where they don't have unity. It's, it's not a good situation.
So help us with the card. It's only a suggestion of, the issue that we went through, is it sensitive and it's very fresh. What do you come up with on a, when you have people in your neighborhoods, in your wards, in your schools, that you associate as close as we are, to simply say exactly what happened right there? You know what I mean? Rather than just say if there's a process that goes through, that person becomes very, that trust drops. Because why? They want an answer. They want to know what they're hearing on the chatter and the frigging drives me crazy.
Social media has so much misinformation out there.
Or when I'm sitting in the stands watching Andy in the basketball game and I hear that behind me, I know the truth, yet I.
You can't say it.
I don't want to say it. I can't say it. I was in the executive, I swore to that. But at the same time, I'd like to be able to still keep the friendship and say, listen, you know what I mean, let the process work. We're doing the best we can. You're being unfair. Person not being treated right. They've been, so I don't know that you can do a card. But you know what I mean? There's got to be a phrase or something that we simply be able to say. And even some of our newer people.
Right, because if you as a board member say one word, one direction or the other, then it becomes on social media, well, the board.
Right.
And it just keeps building. So you got to just be so general and so simple. And anything, the nonspecific in anything we say is.
I.e., emails that come in? Emails, we've done a very good job on our end. Everything goes to the superintendent, she sends it out. They always consistently.
That's been very helpful.
That's got to help because we all have our opinions on homework and we'd like to answer that question. But if she'll do it, they're getting the same answer from everybody at the same time and this portion drops down a little bit.
Yeah.
But you're still going to run somebody in the car into the grocery store or washout.
One of the, one of the best things I've heard about the grocery store is when you first get to the grocery store, put something from frozen foods in your basket. And when somebody stops you, you're like, oh, sorry, I got to go.
And one thing that.
I don't stop to any trouble.
One thing that you can say, just in a kind way, there's a lot of misinformation out there. And we wish him or her well. That's simple. The the less you say, the better.
Absolutely.
But you can say, there's a lot of misinformation out there. We wish him well. That's all.
And your body language sometimes speaks volumes.
It does, it does. And and you don't want to say this, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Just say, there's a lot of misinformation out there. We wish him well. That's all. And because the less you say, the better.
Yeah, something like that, very.
Yeah.
So I have a friend, he's funny. He goes, when people come to him with something juicy and they want to tell him and they 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 say, I gotta tell you this, but you got to promise that you won't tell anyone else you know that line. He always stands and he goes, I promise to swear to secrecy, everyone I tell. It's so funny. And then they don't tell him.
That's how it works. Yes, it is. It gets out.
That's a very good one.
And there are legal, there are legal consequences to disclosing information that you have learned in those close meetings. So it can be very bad for your board. Besides ruining the trust that the problem is.
It's, sometimes you just have to take it on the chin. Because it's a little difficult.
It is.
Well, that's what they hire us for, right? Is to to stand up for the.
That's why we get the big bucks.
Stand up for the district and and make sure that the community isn't allowed to overrun with opinions and overrun the district with opinions and and hearsay, that we're standing our ground, kind of this.
It's okay to stand your ground, but there's still got to be a way to get that message out for this kind. You know what I mean?
What's so difficult about it is the general public doesn't understand the employees' rights, the processes we have to follow through, human resources, all of the policies we have to protect, the confidentiality around an employee either, right? And so it's just tricky. But I think board members, your your jobs are the trickiest of those of those issues, for sure. Yeah. Oh, this one's good. Ready? Yeah. I feel bad for the superintendent.
So that concludes staff's recommendations on our lobbying positions for the upcoming General Assembly session. You've also had a chance to review the information in any of your board packets.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Do I hear a motion to approve the legislative positions packet as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion before we vote?
I think we should change our position on all-day kindergarten. I think Dr. Wilson has not done enough research.
Dr. Wilson, do you have any comments?
Well, we've been working on this legislative package for several months. And I specifically asked that any board members who had questions or concerns contact me when we sent the draft proposals out three weeks ago. I really wish that we had addressed this issue a lot earlier.
How do you feel about that superintendent? I would have awkward. Yes, that would be very awkward. And I hope, I would hope that any of our board members would feel like they could contact me or, you know, just to get more information or express concern there before we get to this point.
You may be just a little uneasy.
I constantly say the whole time I've been here, that's not.
That has helped with my, where the superintendent has been thrown under the bus, these schools, and caught my surprise. And and I think it speaks a lot to the relationship between the superintendent and their board members. You should feel like you should be able to call your superintendent and she can talk to you.
But, go ahead.
I think there's an easy way to say it too, is, you know, with a call. Say, you know, I want to be able to support the proposal that's coming up. Can you give me some explanation?
Yes, yes.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
That's a good one. But, back to that one.
As a board member, I think it's a great learning experience. I wouldn't wanna be the superintendent at the same time, um, if you haven't had the, the collaboration and even the sideline discussion. So we talked about in the very first one, can they have, yeah, you can have that discussion. But the obligation would be for them to go back and talk to the superintendent before we got to that point.
Yes.
So as a board member, we don't ever want it to get it that way. At the same time, if that relationship's there, you should not ever get to there. Um, because I've been in meetings as well, and that, that has happened. But it's the interpersonality conflict and is what the decision, you know what I mean?
There's a lot of those decisions for time's sake, but a lot that's not, so it wouldn't hurt just to say to, you know, this off the month and this gosh, I gotta go.
Yeah, I still have some concerns.
That would have helped in that particular issue.
Exactly.
But again, before it gets to that point.
Yeah, you would hope, you would think before open board meeting, they would have done just in, just for, just for time's sake, for efficiency. You're wasting everyone's time.
And it also appears to the, it also make, appears to the public, watching something like that, oh my gosh, we have a problem on our board, working with our superintendent. They're, they're not united.
Yes, you trust.
That really speaks to the
Trust in the public eye.
The timeframe of getting information to, I mean, it's really nice. We always get our information with plenty of time to review it. And, and so does Andy, right?
Yeah.
Because the superintendent said they had been working on that for several months. And so
Where's he been?
Right, that's, that's a, that has been a big frustration to be on our board. Um, not currently, but in past years, when board members come to board meetings, not go home. They haven't done their homework, they haven't, um, read the packet, they haven't prepared beforehand and asked their questions before the board meeting, if they have some questions or concerns. Um, I'm certainly glad that our board, um, is prepared when we go to board meetings currently. But, um, I have lived through that too, and just because they're not prepared. Which is not fair to the rest of the team, right? If one person is not prepared and then does something like that.
But I'm okay, even if, if you have a bad apple, that's what I'm gonna call that person, who would have that, that wanna bring it out, but probably put it in the meeting, get it out there. I'm okay with the superintendent's reply. Because what will come out with the other ones, you seen the body language on the cow. She closed her eyes. You know what I mean? That says, she's a frustrated, everybody else did that same thing. There's a problem, but it's not the other five or whoever that board is, it's this one, so then the suggestion will be made by the higher. Let's table this till the next meeting and move on. Just to try to get through a real tough situation that might say, it's not all us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and speaking of the body language, that's one of the things that, um, I'm trying to remember which breakout session it was, um, at our annual conference two years ago.
Yeah.
Um, where there was a talk about, remember your body language when you're in a board meeting. And don't do the eye-roll thing and be careful what you do with your hands.
And don't do this. I see that. The other ones, fourteen of the other
And because most of us in this day and age are, have, um, streaming meetings, right? And so, what does that tell, I mean, what does the public believe or perceive about a board where somebody, if, when somebody is making faces or eye-rolling or those types of things? Um, they automatically see a chink in the armor of the, of the unity that exists in the board. And so then they start wondering, well, what else is going on? Um, in the district that I'm not aware of, that, um, they might be trying to hide or whatever like that.
We had an interesting, so what, last five or eight, ten months, maybe even a year. Uh, as we were changing presidencies, we've actually had a group of people, Parents United, that were coming to see us. We normally would have the, the meeting, our, what do we call it? We call it super salad, but it's actually a workshop.
A study session.
Study session. In this room where we would eat and pot. And the superintendent would go over stuff that's in the meeting. There's no problem, so we can get around that. You know what I mean? To make sure that things ran smooth. So we kept our integrity, honesty, our transparency and the respect of our But as that group came in, that you almost started threatening like we had to stay suffer, not do stuff. And it was uncomfortable for me to think, why are we doing that? We still have the right to talk and speak in front of people, and so we switched our meetings a couple of different times. We went out and started eating in the boardroom in front of people. That was uncomfortable because we're eating in front of people who are not, and we're spending their money on our food, thank you. Now we're back in here, and they're welcome to come in. But realistically, we should, as a board, if there ever is anything like that, regardless of who's around us, in one of their sessions, we should still bring it up. So we don't have that caught at any time.
And it is your meeting, and we do have
And they won't run. That's exactly.
They are not there to run your meeting. They can come, and it's a public meeting, but they should not be hampering the work of the school board and your superintendents that you are doing. They come to ours quite frequently also.
Ours has learned, I think, to be honest with you, I think with the, the trust that we've got from Stuart.
He hasn't been around for like six months.
I have lunch with him almost every day, so I talk to him.
Do you really?
Well, he works in the Mountain American Tower. And we just go across the street from the Slick College and eat in the tower. And he comes and talks to me once in a while, so he's been able to say, actually, I'm traveling a lot, I'm homeschooling my kids.
Do you have all his kids?
I've not need to go here. And I say, you're looking on the Tabernacle Choir, just carry on, sir. You know, so we can catch that, but
He's got one, at least playing sports at Orion though, because I saw him at a game this last week.
So at least they're trying to gain our trust where he's not gonna be here to say, that the talent's not ready to get us and say that's not right.
Yeah, they, they can't run
It's our meeting.
It's your meeting, and they cannot hamper the work that you are doing. They can come and
I just have a more general question that is specific to it. How, do you have advice for managing relationships with special interest groups? Whether it be, you know, I don't know, whether, whether it's WA or PTA or United Parents of Utah or, ju- just generally? How do you manage those relationships as a board member?
I would say use this as much as possible. I try to understand, and I, I have found that many of these groups that, um, and people that are, are very angry, sometimes, and during the pandemic, I felt like they came from fear. And when people are afraid, they do insane things they normally wouldn't. And usually, if you can talk to someone, one-on-one, and really try to listen to where they're coming from, and you explain your position, I find that things get a lot better. But, but use this
Even as a board member, perhaps I agree with them, but my body does not. I mean, I wanna, I wanna be able to manage that conversation, so, you know, like I appreciate hearing your, your position, you know.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean
Certainly I can present that.
And I, I'll, I'll let Terry answer this too, but I, I've really come to realize that everybody's just doing the best they can, and, um, the people that are, are, are there saying these things, that sometimes really hateful, really mean things, they feel like they are doing the right thing. And many times, they don't present themselves in, in a manner like with the dignity and the respect. Um, but if you can treat them that way, it kind of disarms them and calms them down. And just remember, it just, it's hard, it's really hard sometimes when they're acting out, really in an angry manner, to remember that they feel like they are doing the right thing and they're passionate about what they feel is right. So, but it, it's hard sometimes, but, but these things will help to
Well, I think too, like, there was a guy that was really upset at truth and taxation. And I responded to one of his emails, and we, we went back and forth, not in a bad way, but he was really um, emotional about the tax. And I just went back to him with facts and understanding, and I said, we're trying to do the right thing here, and his res- his next response to me, his, I mean, and this is all te- this is all email, but he had flipped his, his narrative to be like, I really appreciate that you have like, you know, that you're here, you know Yeah, well, not only made the effort, but that I was coming from a place where we are looking for common ground.
Yes.
And I wasn't like attacking him personally. I was mainly trying to find information. And so, it was like, he went from a place of real, like, he was fired up. And like, my goal was to like, bring, bring it down.
Bring the level down.
And it like, it, I mean, I'm sure he still has opinions. And they weren't the same, you know what I mean? He still held it, but I was like really pleased with how it worked out and just like I said, I try and come when I email people back with facts and not with heightened opinions and emotion, and I think that and acknowledging, I, I also try and acknowledge where they're coming from, and like, I realize you're, like, like especially with the boundaries, like, I realize this is really hard on you and families and and this isn't an easy situation. But we need to re- or decrease overcrowding that we were having. Like, that's how I would
Yeah, I think maybe one of the things that I would respond on that, Kelly, is I would hope that as a group, we would be able to say, I appreciate your email, I appreciate your conversation, I'm gonna defer that to blah, 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 so that we come from a, you know, a united answer, rather than it looking like this one's responding to me, but this one isn't.
Yeah, well, and I, I went back to like, I referred him to Heidi with specific questions about open meetings, like he had his question revolved around open meetings, so I, you know, referred him to counsel, yeah.
And also, you can always refer, like with truth taxation, a lot of
To you.
A lot of you refer to me as superintendent.
Yeah, and I've done that almost every time, but I've just found with people, like, they appreciate being responded to because they feel like that they've been seen and heard, whether or not I'm referring it to Gina or to Robert or to Heidi. Or, there was one that kind of got overlooked a couple of weeks ago on Safe Routes, so I referred her to Kristen. And her thing got figured out really quickly, and so she was just like, thank you so much for getting back to me, so
I think you hit the nail on the head, that the most important thing is that people feel like they have been heard here. That someone has listened to what they have.
And, so first of all, I gotta apologize to the board for what happened with Mr. Lithgow. When he accused us of spending, remember that little girl?
I don't remember. Is that this?
There's no need to go backwards.
No?
I told him you need to have the facts if he's going to accuse us of having that kind of money.
Well, I, I guess.
But the other thing that happens with that is when you respond on emails, we ought to at least make it very general and very short, so they know they're hearing us, but then refer it to the person who does it every day. That's how I try to do it. The, the challenges that I've experienced in the years of doing this, is those people that send that in are looking for a rebuttal. It's going to be very contentious, and that's where they want it to go.
And then they wanna go back and forth.
Absolutely, and that's not what the intent is. They simply wanna try to find them in a source, to give them a solution, and if it happens to be Kristen in transportation, that's why ninety percent of mine, every time, will go right to Gina. You know what I mean? And they're going, oh, it's at the superintendent's level. We deal with the superintendent. When people say, why aren't you involved in sports? We have three things. We have the hiring and firing of the superintendent and business administrator, policies and budgets. You know what I mean? That's what we do. And they want, they think we're involved in all that. We have experts that do it every day that we count on. We just gotta get it to the right person.
But I had, but I had one teacher who was really upset before school started about the new, um, dress code policy. And I referred him exactly to the policy. Like, I didn't send it to anybody else because his questions were just about policy. So I'm like, I don't know if you actually read the policy, and so I copied and pasted the sections that he was like worried that, you know, we were going to morally decay our children over the new dress code, and I was like, this is what it says, I don't know, cause, and, and really, I don't think he'd read it. He'd listened to it, and I think I discussed it with Gina too, just, it'd been presented, and he got fired up about it, and so I, I replied with, this is the actual policy. And this is where you have discretion in the classroom. And because of what the policy said. And the same thing, he came back to me, like, thanks for like giving me more clarity.
I'm really like, when it comes from one source, as opposed from seven sources. Cause then they twist us, right?
But I think if you're going back to policy, like, cause for me, it was like, and I tend to try and just respond to people in my district and let people from the other districts deal with the people in their community.
You two are longstanding board members. How, how does that handle on your board? Is that, because we are, I've been my second year, and I typically, I feel like we're all on the same page. When we respond, I always copy the board, or if they let me know or would like me to address some things, I usually will copy the board on that. What, what, what you feel like is best practice on that score? Um, it depends on what, what the person wants with the email. If they want to re- sometimes they want a response from the board. So then we have the board president do that. Um, because the board president is rep- is the spokesperson for the board. Um, and, but if it's not specifically requesting a board response, then we pass it on directly to the superintendent. A lot of times, they'll send it and they'll copy in each individual board member and me, right? And so, those are, I usually respond, right? And if the, if, if the board president, um, is the respondent, responding person, then, um, the president BCCs in all the other board members. So they know exactly what was said, and, and what the question was and what the concern was, and so that all the other board members know that, um, I'm responding for you. Um, because, like I said, I'm one-seventh of one. I'm not one of seven. And so, I'm, anytime I say anything, whether it's at the grocery store or emailing or whatever, I'm representing the board. Whether the person I'm responding to thinks that or not, um, that's what's happening. And so, um, it needs to be open and not me going directly to my people, um, or to people who are asking me questions. They need to know also that, um, I'm one-seventh of one, and so if you're gonna ask me a question, everybody's gonna know about it. I'm, I'm not doing anything one-on-one.
Yep. We, um, do things just maybe a little differently in our, um, in our district. We have, Davis is a very large district and, um, represent a, a lot of people. And so, what we have done, and, and, um, if, if it is directed, if it's a problem that's going on in a certain precinct, then we have that board member whose precinct it is, respond. But sometimes, it's hard to know. And especially in a district of our size, so we can call Carrie and say, you know, please tell us whose district that is, cause we, I don't know all of my constituents by name. Um, but as Terry said, very best practice is, even if it's a, a one board member responding, to copy everyone else. Um, if, if you know, sometimes it's hard to know who all has gone the email, but if the board president answers, superintendent answers, they copy all of us, so we're all on the same page. But during the pandemic, I, I literally had thousands of emails to answer.
It will go to the most sympathetic ear.
Many times, that's what they're looking for, and it's hard to know sometimes because they have all the blind copies and all of that. But if you do know that it is one of your constituents, if they mention the school and that's in your precinct, then, um, you say, you know, you'll respond and copy everyone else. So, so because it became a problem of, um, we just want to respond to everybody. And so we wanted to make sure somebody responded, so that's how we've handled it.
I like making sure everybody's in, on the same page and involved.
Yes, on the same page, otherwise they try to fracture you again. So sympathetic to what I'm telling them. That's what they're trying to do.
Sometimes, the, the email strings on Gmail, which we use Gmail a lot of the times too. It's so convoluted. It's, it's crazy to, they really do, who's answering what, man?
Yes.
And I think it would be appropriate in most occasions not to use a blind copy, but just to, but if the superintendent will respond, she would say, I'm including all of our board members on this response, so that we all are on the same page.
Right, right, right. I, I know that a couple of years ago, and I don't know if they're still doing this, Alpine, of course, is the largest district, they actually appointed one person to answer all the emails, and I felt so sorry for that one person. But I don't know if they're still doing that, but we, we don't do that.
Well, that's just helpful. Appreciate that very much, yep. Yeah, it's a purpose to stay united so that your public doesn't fracture your board after they, you know.
Hey, Terry, let me just comment on that if I could, and that'd be superintendent, you ask a really great question about what's the best practice? And, and I think the best practice really comes when, when you as a board And and I think the best practice really comes when when you as a board agree to that process. Here here is going to be our process and, you know, and you've talked a little bit around that here, I think. Uh, from, you know, comments, John, that you have made, you know, and so if your process is that things go to you superintendent for you to respond. Then I think that that is helpful for everybody to to agree to, this is what our process is gonna be. It may have been different under, you know, the prior superintendent, and it may be different under future superintendent. And so you as a board, you have to come together and agree on not only that one, but on a whole bunch of other processes.
Yeah, and I think that this is one that we we probably need to solidify, and I I can work with President Whitson and we can speak, talk that through and then. Make sure that we get it out, but I I think one thing that is key is that everybody's in the loop, there's no private conversations going on, right?
Yeah.
You know, and then I think the other factor you have to take into account, and that is, you know, are you prepared to respond to all of those emails? Um, and it really helps a board member, you know, if you can say, okay, well, you know, when they contact you and say, hey, thank you for contacting me. You know, the process that we have as a board is we have, you know, we have a chief executive officer and they're the one who will respond to you. And why? Well, because you're the one who can solve the problem, you know, and it may be.
I can't solve it if I don't know about it, right?
Yeah, and, you know, and you're the one that's in charge of your staff. And so it may be that you're gonna direct that question to the transportation director and say, you know what, here's an issue, it's a Genesis area. You know, take care of that thing today.
Yep, yep.
And and so you can direct the staff where the board has no authority to direct staff.
Yeah.
Uh, if, that's how you can get it done quickly and and more expeditiously.
Sure is.
You know, it's really interesting, I was with the training with the board member from Alpine with Mark Clement the other day. And and he talked about, you know, what he does now in Alpine School District. And he said, you know, I have a board member that spends so much time involved in doing things, uh, school board business. And he said, and you know, they've kind of become the person where everybody goes to, and they've kind of solicited the input from the public. So it's kind of like, hey, you know, just contact me. And Mark said, he and he represents the Pleasant Grove area, which is a very large area, and he said, I rarely get a contact, I rarely get an email from anybody.
What?
And he said, and why?
It's always the other person.
He says, pe- people know what our process is. And he said, and so, you know, if somebody does contact me, or he says, people in our area just know, you know, if they've got an issue with the school, what do you do? You go to the principal. You know, if you've got a problem or something beyond that, what do you do? You go to the superintendent. And he said, and so people have learned what our process is. Um, and so, you know, that's to me the bottom line of a best practice is, whatever you decide, that you need to be the ones who make that decision and saying. This is what we're gonna do, this is how we do it, the Weber way.
Yep.
Is is right here, uh, with respect to that and and all of the others. And then, you know, things go well and people are are satisfied as patrons and employees because they know there's a process in place. Um, and so to me, um, it didn't matter what you do, as long as you, as long as you guys agree, this is how we're gonna do it here, yeah.
Everybody has a, as you see, our process is very interesting.
When when I get an email, uh, I know that I can't answer that email as well as somebody in this building can.
Yeah.
I I build rockets for a living, I don't run a school district, you know, and so that's why I always send it to the experts to answer.
And I and I totally understand that, but I think, I personally think as someone who's been elected to your area. That whoever's sending you the email feels like we elected you, we would at least appreciate you to respond and say.
Yes.
Hey, I've heard you, I've seen you, and I will find, whether it's Gina, whether it's Kristen, whether it's whatever, I just know too many people in my community have felt like in the past.
Yes, sure.
They've shot off emails to the board, and I'm not saying it was Dean, I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody, but they've said they've they've sent off emails with absolutely no response.
And ignoring.
Yeah.
And so I just think, then it's not saying that someone's gonna come to me all the time, because I don't, cause like I said, I've gotten some. Like one time I got CC'd on an email from someone in Sandridge, and I was like, this was not meant for me, so like I forwarded it to, cause I'm like, that's not my area.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's someone from my area.
You you want to respond to them, of course, yes.
I want to just say, hey, I've heard you, and I either here's the policy and I have no problem, I think it's a great idea to CC everybody back.
Yeah.
Yep. Or find the right, but I think at least acknowledging that you got, especially if it's a one-on-one, yeah.
Agreed, yeah.
Some someone needs to answer, yes, make sure it's someone's.
And that's what I try to do is I will respond back to them and say, you know, for the best information, I'm gonna forward this.
Yeah.
So so at least they're getting a response, but but these people up here can answer those questions for the most part, tons better than I can, but. Well, but you know what's been good about that? I've done the same thing, but I've not done your step, Kelly.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna be part of that fracturing point, and I've had too much experience for them to do that, or opportunities.
I don't know, it has to be fracturing, though.
I don't want it to be, well, because they wanna be able to wedge it and push it to where they wanna go. So what I do is I simply send it to Gina, and then Gina replies very perfect. Hi, Bridget, I'm sorry, I got this word from board member John Ritchie, and here I can answer the question. So they know I got it, I forwarded it, and now Gina's given the explanation, that's perfect on all the ones she sends, and I'm thinking, that's ideal. And then if she copies everybody.
Yeah, and at least they know that you responded to them, though, you told them.
So either way, I'm very excited.
Yeah, I responded, but I didn't respond directly.
I don't like to respond personally, just because I I do this well, I think.
And I think that, Kelly, I think that's great.
As long as they know that you heard them, that's your board member, I would say, even they know that the process that you use, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I was really glad that Richard, Richard brought up what he did, because um when you get an email or a call about what's going on in our school. Your first response always should be, have you spoken to the teacher about this?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
If you have, have, and you didn't get, you know, felt like you weren't listened to, have you spoken to the principal about this, most problems.
Worked up the chain, yeah.
Yeah, can be taken care of, you know, and those local ones.
Kelly brought up another good issue, I think, how responsive should we be? Or how focused, I guess, not responsive, but how focused should we be on um our elected area versus, we are now a school board and we're we're um. You know, one seventh of one, so we can't, I I mean, I don't want to respond only to the needs of my particular area.
And I'll answer that for mine, because um we s- we're, we serve all of Davis County, so we have almost a hundred schools. So I definitely don't focus on those in my area, but for logistical purposes, we have divided it up. Um, as and even, you know, with with emails, um, so that it could better help us serve the whole county. But I'm all over Davis County, I don't just focus on my area, like for logistical purposes, sometimes to get the work done.
Well, I just think like, I, you know, like if.
And make sure that everything does get done, we have divided it up in that way, but we hardly ever even talk about that.
But the question. The questions are gonna be more specific to different demographics, o- often.
Sometimes, yes. Sometimes, yeah, I, but.
So to me, the the most important part is to remember that you're one seventh of one.
Yeah.
And to figure out what process you're gonna use as as the one, as the board, and stick to that. Um, you definitely want to respond respond to your people, I get my share of, so, hi, Terry, you are my board member.
Yeah.
Um, I get my share of those, and um I just tell them, thanks for, I said, we always appreciate um. Uh, engaged parents like yourself reaching out to us with questions, and um. Uh, currently I'm the, and so I'll say, um, well, I'll pass this on to the board president and they can answer from you, for you. For, on behalf of the board, or if it's a, if it's a specific thing that needs to be answered by the district, then I'll pass it on to the superintendent. But that's how our process is working, the important thing is to figure out, but it took us a few years to get to the pro- a process that worked for us.
Well, I just think our school representatives are, have such a broader perspective than I do, even as a board member.
Right, well, now you have the new USBE, the board rule that just came out, where a parent, thou canst file a complaint.
Right, yes.
About anything, anyone, anonymously or identify themselves.
Yep.
And we just found out today that we have as a, as a district entity, we must investigate those and report back to to USBE and and UPAK. I don't, I, we get those, you've noticed the volume, I send them to to Paul, they come to Paul and John and I, but they're.
Oh, yes.
They're basically just, it could be somebody that has a a problem with a coach at a school.
Yes, we've had him too.
You know, and they 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 go, they go over and above all of the the hierarchy and it goes right there. But I've gotta still have the ability to be investigated, look at it and go through it, right? And so those are the, it's kind of the same kind of a process, I think, we, we're the ones that are gonna be able to do the legwork here at the district level, figure out what what the right outcome is to be.
Right, and um, and you probably should know that as USBA officers, we were involved in those discussions at the focus meetings. And at least was able to make that that a little bit better than it was, because at first, they were giving, it was a matter of hours.
All good.
It feels heavy.
Yeah.
Before it got sent to UPAK, so we fought against that.
Good, good.
And and then, of course, there's always that hotline as well to the state board office, but um, and then it also came up in committee hearings this week at the Capitol. On the idea of having an ombudsman, well, they already have the hotline that they can do, so we've been in there fighting against some of these things, so you need to know that.
But the whole premise, no, and I appreciate that, but the whole premise behind it is the public feels like things get swept under the rug and not addressed, and so we needed this other avenue, right?
It is, yes, yes.
So the more we can do as a board to to certainly make sure that 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 is not who we are, we want to understand your concerns, right?
To to dispel that, yes. Yeah, and and many times when the legislator says, oh, I I've heard from many people, when you actually talk to them, it might be one neighbor.
Yep.
Or maybe two, but but the the idea is out there with some people that that they're not being listened to. So the more we can do to dispel that myth, the better.
And the more we educate our patrons within our district, within our precincts and and um, and and about our processes. Um, it's like Bridget said, we don't have that problem anymore because we have spent so much time um educating our people to let them know. Like Mark said, we've spent so much time telling them, well, this is where you start with that, and so after you've done these steps, then come back to me. Or um, this is our process, when you write to the board, then I'll pass this on to whoever, so.
Where, Terry, where? Gets sticky, I think, and I I I was a principal, so I I see both sides of this, but it's if a board member or anybody at the district level. Um, says, let me go look at that and find out the answer, versus guiding them to the right people, right?
So it's important to educate them that this is where you start with this and come back to me if, or or let me know how it goes, don't say come. Don't say come back to me, just say, let me know how how this is resolved after you've done these things. Um, and and so it's important that as we have communications from our public, that we educate them about our processes. So we have to have those processes set up, whether it's um email responses or concerns about things happening at schools or whatever. As as a board, we have to have those processes set up, so we can say, so this is the process that that you should follow to get an answer for this. And um, you know, depending on what the concern is, and or because our process is this in responding to emails to the board. I'm going to pass you along to um superintendent and or, you know, whatever you decide your process is. So so one of the sticky ones to me is when they say, look, I I wanna talk to you as a board member, but I don't want anybody to know who I am. Exactly, yes.
How how do you respond to that?
Um, I just had one of those anonymous emails, and I wasn't gonna answer it, but our superintendent recommended that I do that. That I answer it even though it was anonymous, and I couldn't tell, and it was an email um address. Sometimes they're not anonymous to us, but they request the family. Right.
They did, they say their name, but they don't want you to pass along their name, right?
And but this was an anonymous email that was not signed by a name, and I couldn't tell from the address, the email address. Who it was, um, they sent the email to me because I live on the west side of Cash Valley. And their complaint was, there are no schools on the west side, why are we not building school, more schools on the west side? And so um, I spoke with the superintendent and he said, you know, they're asking you because you live on the west side. So so I um ans- I wrote the answer, but then I, before I sent it, I made sure that they were, that the superintendent was okay with it. And then I copied in all of the board members, so they understood that, what what the question was and and my response. Um, and I did that only because they were asking whoever it was, was asking me specifically. And but I did ask, I did ask them, if you have more questions or concerns about this, please call me. Um, because I always think that if I could talk in person to someone, um, that that it's easier to solve the problem. And um, so, or I could have said, um, please call the superintendent, because the superintendent was willing to do that too. And he feels the same way I do, that a face-to-face conversation usually solves it faster than email.
Always, I agree.
Especially when those email threads get so convoluted after so many responses. Jan, I think you bring up a a great point, cause again, somebody's wanting to give input, but not wanting to own that input necessarily, right? They wanna influence maybe what you're thinking about the situation, those are tricky, and I think um, I have that happen as the superintendent from employees.
Sure.
Or from from other, for parents, and I think I always try to say, listen, I can't make that promise because I have to solve the problem.
Yep.
So therefore, please know that I I wanna hear what you're saying, and I'll I'll try to keep it as confidential as I can, but there are people that are in need to know of the situation, and I might have to share the source, does that make sense?
Thank you.
Usually they appreciate that, and then either they either stop and say, no, I don't wanna share it, or they come forward and share it, yeah.
But but there are times when it's not this huge urgent life-changing things where you can't keep keep it, keep a confidence and say.
Yep.
I have a constituent that has this concern, and you don't have to say their name always, but if it's a danger to anyone, you know, of course you would, but. There are times that you don't have to show their names.
Most often.
Most often the question though would impact more than them individually.
Right, but if but if it's something, you know, that you can keep a confidence, you can just say, one of my constituents, you know, had this question in general.
I think there are all, there's so much concern that if they're a parent, it's gonna come back retaliation.
To to hurt their child, yes.
And so that's where I try to maintain a deep confidence.
If you can, if you can, do it, yeah.
I I think the the important thing is that we, for for me, is that we build trust in.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the fact that everybody is out for the best for your child, not just me.
Yes, yes, they're passionate about their child, yes.
So if you if you're concerned about retaliation or you're concerned about that, I have confidence that our people are not gonna do that. And if we can clearly state that, like truly, that's important.
Paul, um, we're just about to the one thirty mark.
Sorry.
You know what, we we cheated you a little on the bit, on the front end of that though, so go ahead.
That's my fault, sorry.
And do what you need to do.
Okay, and I think Bridget needs to leave.
I I do, I need to go, I just um, and and I don't know how how many more slides we wanted to do, but. And again, for those that like paper, I did print this, and it's been, I think I even had it in my newsletter article, but what successful board members do, and I think these are really important. And I won't read them to you, but you can look at them.
Great, great.
So important that we, that we support all board decisions, you may disagree, but in the meeting, and you can say your piece, but in the end. Um, support the board decision and, and there's other things on there, um.
It's it's, uh, I think as board members, one of the most important things for us to do is to make sure we're doing board work. And allow our superintendent to make, to uh. To do his or her work, um, which is, we hire them to oversee the district and all of the employees. Um, it's it's definitely not our role to go into schools and um try to stir anything up or to make promises. or to make promises to employees, or make suggestions to employees. Those are things, that's way out of barley. I love visiting schools because I, schools are just so full of life. But when I go, I'm usually pretty quiet unless somebody, you know, wants to ask me a question or something like that. I'm just there to support and observe and, and tell them things. And I'm not there to solve any problems because that is the principal's problem, or principal's job, or the superintendent's job. As a board member, I, I'm more there as an ambassador than a person who is looking for a problem to solve, or trying to overstep my bounds. I'm not there to be in the day-to-day work of the school. I'm there to enjoy the environment. So it's, it's, and, and it's great for us to be in schools. One of the things we heard last night in our interviews for our open position on our board was from a, a former teacher who has applied for the position, who said, I, until this board, and she taught for 41 years, she said, before she retired last year, she said, until this board happened, I had never seen a board member in schools. And I love knowing that my board members care enough to be in my school. So, it's important that we do be seen in our schools, but to make sure that we're not there except to be seen as ambassadors. We're not there as troublemakers or problem solvers. It's, it's just a great, I love the role because I don't have to be the superintendent or the principal.
And I'll just add one last thing. You're a team, you're a team. And you're a team of school board members working with your superintendent. You have hired her to do a good job, a job, and she's doing a great job. Support her, but let her do her job and work together as a team. So, thank you for inviting us.
No, this is.
Sixty-one. Yes, that was a great one.
We appreciate it.
I love that word ambassador. And, and if we can be the ambassador, and remember what John said, we hire a superintendent, we hire a business administrator, we help with policy, and we help with budget.
Yeah.
We're ambassadors.
Do you wanna know what Superintendent Sid Dixon calls herself? A cheerleader. She's head cheerleader for education.
She's right.
Same, same, along the same lines as ambassador, she calls herself the head cheerleader. She just cheers everybody on.
She does a great job.
Yes, she does. She does. Maybe we're inviting her.
Before you leave, since we never have any of this in here, I have to apologize to Robert.
I thought it was, I, yes.
I'll help you. So the flag's going back up.
No, I thought that it was the T V D index in action. I loved it. And I think that we can use that as an example. We should share that in our board meetings. Because you didn't yell at it, he didn't yell at you, you just talked it out. And now you're gonna talk some more. And she's still smiling and you are too, so.
I've never seen her hyped up like that.
I thought it was a great example.
I thought you were gonna say.
My problem is, I just collected 400 signatures to get it out of the ballot.
I totally understand. I thought you handled it very well.
Vice President Ritchie asked for just 30 seconds or so to follow up on one thing.
And I knew that USBA leadership wanted to leave, because Bridget had to go somewhere. Years ago, and this has changed, but years ago, we were talking about being in schools and being ambassadors in schools. I loved being in schools, especially around the fire tree. If I could go to Roy High and read Dickmore's advice, I would already eat dinner every day. And so I'd go into schools, I had seven elementarys, and I stayed there for part of my emergency plan. I loved to be in the schools. But when I'd go to an odd elementary school, I'd get this real cold sugar film. And it wore on me for about six months till I finally got Joel Fredwicksen to tell me why. And I knew why. And his director had told him, when a board member comes in here, you don't talk to them.
What?
Don't let them in here. And I found him, I said, Mike, that is the worst thing you could ever do to one of our board members and your staff. Because there's a reason I'm in here, and it's not that you think I'm trying to micromanage you.
What else was there?
None. It's exactly what you said, Paul.
They just get uncomfortable. They wonder, they get uncomfortable. I mean, that's a rock.
But I think that's good education on your end.
But if we just still get, the only reason I wanted to stick to this group is because I knew we'd have the directors from both levels in here. That says, our thread is about as minimal as a mouse. We want to just be ambassadors, like I said. That would be my mission, President, is to go as an ambassador when I'm in the schools, to see them, film them. I loved being in the schools, but I didn't do it when I was a kid, so I like being in them now. Easy.
Well, in the, in the spring.
You have to listen to everything he says.
I just heard he's going on the west parking lot, right?
No, I'm just gonna say, in the spring, I emailed all my, since I was new, I emailed all my principals and just said, I'd love to come in and meet with you and see your school. And like Kurt, what's, what's her?
Swalber.
Swalber. He invited me to Far West when they had their leader in me presentation. So I got to see that and walk through their school. And it was awesome. Like, I loved it.
I'm lucky you didn't.
And I went to like, or at Orchard Springs, they had an assembly. And I came in, and I wasn't part of the assembly, but I just thumped all the kids as they walked out, so.
I think the more often we're there, the rest of it.
But, but the thing is, you wanna be there, but you also don't want them to think you're bringing an agenda.
No, and I, yeah.
And the issue that happens is sometimes they do fly them up, and I understand that, Gina. I really do. I used to think that. When the mayor would come in, you know what I mean? But the more I can walk them in, they can learn what I'm doing, or they'll walk me in for what they're doing. You might get a shirt or a hat.
Yeah.
We can do a better job, John, of helping educate them around that.
I think it's got better. What I'm saying is, that, that has changed over the years since we've moved good people, better people into worse people's positions.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
He's doing his parking lot job.
That's a Roy High statement.
I think you gotta counter the events like that leader in me, or assemblies, or things like that. I think that would be a great thing.
It's healthy.
But if I do have something, they know that everything's going back to that central person. So if I was coming with something, I wouldn't be coming with something. So like Gina, like we talked about before, if I get an email or there's an issue, or like Bridget said, what if you get the phone call or the person that's always saying, I always do the same thing, the protocol is, you're coming to as a board member. Who have you talked to? The teacher? I don't like the teacher. Did you go to the principal? I don't like the principal. Did you go to the director, supervisor, elementary education? I haven't thought of that. Who it is?
Well, because I don't feel like people don't even know that, that you guys exist. I mean, really. But that's the thing.
Yeah. Well, we, we've got, we've, we've gotta do a better job of that. But I think we could even maybe put that out there somewhere, even on our board page. We can talk about some processes. I don't know. We can, we'll talk about it.
That would be great.
Yeah. I think the more transparent we can be, where they understand the process, the better, so. But that's a great point, John. I, I always loved you in the school. I, he was there when I was there. He'd come and visit at Roy. What can I do to help you? I, I appreciated that.
I think it's just good to know what's going on, especially as we're voting on policy, that we've walked into schools.
Sure, sure. Absolutely, absolutely. I don't know if you want me to take it, or if you wanna, we've got a couple guests and I'll explain the why. Okay. All right, all right. We've got two lovely, three lovely guests here that I wanna welcome, first of all. We've got two agenda items, and we probably won't be able to spend as much time on them as we would like, but we wanna introduce a few thoughts to you today. And then I'll have you take away some things to maybe take a look at. But Brock and Matt, as you know, have been highly involved in Westfield, Mountain View, setting up the models for those two schools, the secondary schools that we're building. And when I came into this role, this is a little historical. Dr. Stevens said to me, Gina, there's one thing that's brewing a little bit, that he gave me a handoff list. But one thing that's brewing a little bit is that we're hearing from some of our junior highs, and he named a few, that they really would like us to look at the block schedule. The block schedule is the A and B schedule that's at the high school. Four classes on one day, four additional classes on the other day. As this new model has been developed for Mountain View in specific, Matt Patterson, the principal there, has requested that we at least hear what, what he's thinking. And I'm gonna let Brock and Matt kind of speak for that. They would like to propose to the board that we take a look at maybe having a pilot program run for the start of the 24 school year, wherein the two schools that feed Westfield, so Mountain View and Rocky, pilot a block schedule. And, and he'll give you some background. He's done, Brock's done an amazing job on collecting some data. He's talked to their district. We're one of the only districts that's still on a seven-period schedule for the junior high. And there's some benefits, and then there's some cons to it too. So I want you to understand the whole piece. But this is just meant to be introductory, give you an idea of what, what some of the folks involved are thinking and why, and get your take on it. So please feel free to ask questions, okay?
Back, back in early part of the Dark Ages, when I went to Sandridge, we were on the A and B schedule. But I think the problem was, is it was so complex. You know, you'd walk in and, and it was the second Tuesday after a full moon on a Friday. You had one class and if you, you know, it was just really complex. I don't know how it is now, but.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good point.
There's a big sign when you walk in that says, today is A and B.
You know, and that probably would've helped some.
Yeah.
It could only be single.
Yeah, it's true though. It helps me. My kid will be like, it's tomorrow A and B.
I know, yeah, that on you.
No, that's great. And, and like I said, there's pluses and minuses to all, all ways of doing it. But I'm gonna let Brock take it, okay? Welcome Brock and Matt.
Appreciate it. Just to talk to that point, most of our high schools do have a placard that says A and B. Most of them put it on their calendars as well that shows. And the nice thing about our schools is each day, it actually will show you as a student on the app which day it is. So there's, there's a lot more out there now.
Is that getting used?
The student and parent app is widely used.
Oh, good.
Very popular. So we wanted to give you a current state of the district, where we're at in our schools. So for high schools, we know they're on the A and B, which is four periods a day, eight total classes possible, right? A contract for teachers, they're teaching six classes total. So three, traditionally, normally is three each day. They have two preps over the course of two days, so most teachers will set it up where they're having a prep every day. At our high schools currently, the classes range from 75 to 78 minutes. The difference being some put their announcements as part of their class. It's just small tweaks that way. The teachers then have 265 minutes with 75 minutes of prep each day, and then they have that flex period. So three classes of 75 minutes plus a flex is where that 265 comes in. And I took a two-week period because over the course of two weeks, they've had the equal number of A and B day periods. So just to make the math easy. So over 10 days, there are 750 minutes of prep. And that's, that's a key component to keep in mind as we go through this. So that's 12 and a half hours every two weeks that our teachers have a prep at the high school. For junior highs, there are seven classes a day. They teach six of those seven classes with one prep every day. Those classes, again, same idea, because of some different programs in each school, are between 45 and 48 minutes long. That means they're teaching 302 minutes per day with, on average, a 47-minute prep and then a flex. And the flex in the junior high is anywhere from 17 to 22 minutes. Where at the high school, they're all about 45 minutes. So over that same 10-day period, there is 470 minutes of prep in the junior high, which is just under eight hours.
Do we have very many junior high students that are teaching seven classes?
There's a handful of them.
Okay. But not as many as the high school.
Not as many as the high school.
And that should be resolved somewhat with the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just curious.
Rock and Roll is by far, are the most. So just initially looking at this, there's obviously a, a large discrepancy in the amount of prep time that our teachers have.
What about instructional time?
So the instructional time, so you're looking at the 265 and the 302. So that's your difference. If you extract like that over the 10 days, it ends up being about a seven-minute per day difference because of.
I guess what I'm asking is kids' instructional time, not, not teachers'.
No, that's, that, that's what they're receiving.
Yeah, in.
No, because it's.
No, not, it's not.
Teachers are teaching three classes, right?
Yeah, it's not that specific. But when I, when I put it out and did the math, it ends up being about seven minutes more in the junior high. And what ended up, you know, as I talked with quite a few people, the time it takes to get the classes under control, the amount of time that the students are packing up or releasing early, you're looking at about four of that seven minutes per day that is wasted time. So around the state, I wanted to kind of give you an idea of where things are at. Davis and Ogden School District both use a junior high block model. Some of them in Davis are four-by-four models, some of them are five-by-five models. They've given the autonomy within some of those schools to make some decisions on their own.
I have a question. What do you know about the, because like my nephews are in the 10 classes at Davis. Do they get enough instructional time in their core classes to count for the, because that's what.
Yeah, that's one of the pros you're gonna see here. It doesn't look like it would. But, but if we back them up, you can back two math classes up daily, or two English classes. Does that make sense, over two days? So he'll speak to that piece, I think.
Do they have to take, like, would a math class require two periods?
We would really would try to if that's an area which, the third piece of our agenda today, Kelly, is our strategic plan. No, but one of the things we need to see is more instruction around our, our core areas. Yeah. And so that, that's part of it.
Okay, sorry.
But that's a great question. That's a great question.
Not if they don't take the double blocks.
Yeah.
Comparing some of the districts across the state that are similar inside, I didn't take any of the, you know, larger, smaller, yeah, rural school districts. But Alpine, Toronto, Losatch, and Washington are also on the junior high block schedule. Cache is not, but they've got middle schools where ninth graders are in the high school. So all of your graduation credits are at the high school level. Box Elder also is not. They have the middle school model and then the intermediate school model. So it's a little bit different setup than we have in our district. And then eight of the 14 districts have the ninth graders in the high school. So those ninth graders are on block schedule.
So now the Salt Lake County, Jordan, Canyons, Granite, they don't have a, they don't have junior high block.
No.
But a lot of them have ninth-graded.
Ninth graders in the high school.
Or that bottom line or.
So they are the ninth grader.
Right. So, so one thing that does come up in this is, if you were to look at a junior high, you're now having eight credits as a possibility to where there are some concerns. Are we oversaturating the number of credits that kids are getting early? So it may be something we wanna look at, the number of credits required for graduation on the back end.
Does Davis require more graduation credits than we do?
They don't.
I don't think so.
No. So just to keep an idea of where these educational opportunities are gonna benefit us. So one is the increased class length that would come into the junior highs. If you're going from a 47-minute period to a 75-minute period, it allows teachers to go deeper into some of their instructions. The other one that Gina had referenced is the possibility of double blocking some of the core classes. So especially for students who are struggling in math, you would have that, that class every day for 75 minutes a day. It opens up for a lot more depth in the concepts, opportunities for teachers to be there to help with the homework and the remediation, opportunities for, you know, students who are struggling to reteach and spend that time doing it. There are some districts who are also doing that with their English students to try and still.
We have room to do that, Brock?
We would if we went this.
If they do that, are they, is that by requirement? Is that by?
So I think that's something we would, we would wanna get around.
Thank you.
What they've done in Davis is some of the honors classes where students are able to pace themselves and, and be successful, they don't require that.
That's what I wanna say, Brock. Some of the districts, they would do, if, if a kid is on a target for math, they could do extensions, or they could, you know, enrichment type, or take a higher level of math, that second period of math, and things like that. And those that are hard in math, they get to tell the dogs a math.
In talking with some of our lab classes, our sciences, our foods, even the PE and our CTE areas, a lot of times they'll teach and then the class is over. They won't actually get an opportunity to get into the labs. Or if they get into labs, they only get a portion of what they're actually doing. And they'll have to come back the next day, and a lot of that time is spent catching the kids back up. The longer class periods allows them to go through these, these full experiences with the students. We are in the ATSI for quite a few of our EL and special education programs in our schools. This allows for more in-depth support for those students, to where we can spend extra time preparing and working through those students to help them out. And in all of our high schools, we have a flex period, which is that built-in remediation time, intervention period, that will provide a longer one in our junior highs. Right now, it's relatively short. They hit the surface level. There's not a lot of time for students to retake tests or quizzes, or even for teachers to reteach concepts. This would allow, with those built in every single day, for those students to get into that. It increases opportunities for student choice. And what I mean by that is, as our seventh graders, eighth graders, and ninth graders, those classes are relatively prescriptive in the options they have. As a seventh grader, you're taking this class. As a seventh grader, you're taking this class, and you get to choose of one or two, uh, electives. Same as the eighth grader, same as the ninth grader, they're pretty prescriptive. Adding one more period allows for a little more exploration in those elective areas, um, especially if students are where they need to be in the math or English area.
Well, and kids who are in the dual language immersion have a real problem with feeling like they don't have any flexibility for extra classes because of their DLI.
Um, and then one that I think is a benefit to the, the educators themselves is increased opportunities for those teachers to work together. In the high school, it's a little more difficult, and then there have been a few schools that have tried it, but in the junior high where there are a fewer number of, of individual classes, it allows us to then align preps for teachers, to where they've got time to then get together. Currently, we s- we use our early outs as that PLC collaboration time. This would allow us to be, uh, a little more strategic with our, our master schedule, to where we can overlap some of those prep periods. And now allow those teachers, at least one of every two days, that seventy-five minute period has an option for them to collaborate, to, to prepare their teaching materials and, uh, look at student, um, concepts. So increased time for junior highs, to grade assignments, prepare lessons, obviously, they're, they've got a much shorter time, if you remember the twelve and a half hours per two-week period compared to the just under eight hours. We are working in the secondary to bring in instructional coaches, uh, over the next year. And that's an opportunity for those, those instructional coaches to get in and work with our teachers to help them improve. The idea being, if we have an instructional coach, we would like that person to teach three periods and be an instructional coach for three periods, so that's their six periods. Uh, if we set that up on an A, B day model, they would have an entire day to get into different teachers' classes, rather than trying to slot it into their open periods where, uh, for some, where it's not, uh, at the same time, they're gonna miss out on those opportunities to get in. And then this is one where it may not seem like a, an extreme concern, but where right now junior highs have an opportunity for a single buyout, our high school teachers have an opportunity for two buyouts, which, one, we already know causes burnout when those teachers start taking those. But on the financial end of things, it gives our high school teachers an opportunity to actually make quite a bit more money than our junior high teachers if they are doing those single work double finals. Now, hopefully with the, the new schools, we're eliminating a lot of those buyouts, I mean, that's ultimately the goal. But this is something just as a, as a byproduct that we are looking at, and we have had questions on in the past.
Can, can I ask if I can move back to that instructional coaching? When are you looking to?
So that is, our plan is to implement that next school year.
Can I speak to that really quickly, this is part of a later discussion? One of the things we know we need to do is provide more teacher support side by side. And we've had the mentoring program working in our district for a long time, where mentors, mostly retired educators, typically a principal or even district folks, were those mentor pieces. These would be people that are actually still working in the school, certified teachers, know the culture of the school, know which teachers, you know, are maybe in a bit, bit of a struggle. We've changed our reading specialists in the elementaries and pivoted them to instructional coaches, now we need to add that piece to the secondary level. It's just.
So you could implement that without changing schedules currently?
Yeah.
Okay.
And give us a little more flexibility to free some people up that way, Jan.
Uh, just a couple other areas where we consider positives. In the junior highs, a majority of our disciplinary actions happen in between classes. Behaviors, behaviors are struggles right now.
And then the bathrooms.
This is, this is an option to almost cut those transitions in half, right? You're going from seven class periods where they're switching every forty-five minutes, um, to now you're looking at four classes. So you're looking at fewer transitions. It does allow for more time for homework in class. This is something that I taught at Orion when I first came to the district, and then transferred out to Fremont. And so you understand the amount of time towards the end of the period where you can actually get kids started on their homework, rather than just sending them home with nobody to be there to answer questions, right? And so, uh, where teachers structure their time, if they do this, they're able to get these students moving forward. And you end up getting a lot of students that don't have that homework. We wanna, we wanna make sure they're getting that done.
But they gotta cover twice as much in one, one period.
And what we have found is a lot of them will do that, um, but there's a lot of wasted time in the junior highs where they're not actually covering the whole, um, system, and they're, and they're glossing over a lot of it because they're trying to move so quickly. So that's where, uh, the curriculum department, our, our PLCs now are actually going back and really identifying those priority standards and, and making sure they're hitting those ones, um, really, really deep.
So my, my question would be as a parent, if they have that opportunity to do it, will they take advantage of it? Or will they just do what you said and waste it away? And if so, we could come back and say, they're given the time to take that at school, whether or not, we don't know. Right? You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that goes to something on the next slide, I'll, okay, I'll touch base on that. The thing that I see as, as a big positive, it puts all of our secondary schools on the same schedule. Where right now, we've got our high schools, um, on one schedule, our junior highs on another, there's a lot of things that are just, are misaligned. We've got possibly some opportunities for ninth graders to access certain courses at the high school if necessary. But for, for the transportation, the opportunities for, um, these two schools to work together, there's a lot of benefits to it.
Would that be like, junior high kids actually going to the high school and taking classes there, or online?
Um, I, I think we'd have to be selective on what we do, but I'm sure you guys have heard some concerns about like our drill, where ninth graders are allowed to participate in drill, right? But we don't allow them to come up, right? And so, um, not saying this is how we have to do it, but Davis County does allow for some of those things. And so it's something where we could look at some possibilities depending on which direction we want to go.
Also a good example is like German, you know, there's that's out there in the north end, he, he bounces between two junior highs. Now you could have a, a unique niche class bounce between the high school, A day on high school, B day on the junior, of course, off.
Sure.
You get more options.
Yeah. And this last point here, uh, touches to what I was saying. Right now, currently, we have, um, twelve teachers who split their time between schools. And this is one of them, he, he goes between Orion and North Ogden. We, as a district, are using their prep time as a travel period. And so using their prep time, we have to compensate that, right? And so for those teachers, we are paying a hundred forty-two thousand dollars this year, and have been for years, many years. If we have the A and B set up, we could have a teacher at one school on an A day, at another school on a B day, and there's no travel, because it's just their home base. And so that helps to, obviously, financially be responsible with, uh, some of those funds. For every pro, there are a handful of areas of concern, and we wanna be very mindful of that. The first thing is the, the increased class length, and this is where, um, I think John was talking about this, are those teachers gonna plan their classes and make sure the kids are doing what they're doing and not wasting the time? There's gonna have to be some professional development for those teachers. Uh, that's something where quickly I realized, coming from the junior high to high school, it was a major benefit, because I did have this extra time, I could go deeper on certain things, but I did have to make sure that I structured it well, where I might have to cover a class and a half worth of material, um, on certain things, but where those concepts do combine, I could do that. So there's gonna have to be some, some professional development on that. And then for students, they're sitting longer, right? They're coming from an elementary and they are sitting longer.
You've got to get more involved in experiential, hands-on stuff, move it around.
Well, that becomes a professional development, cause I remember, I, when I first taught, I, I'm an old man, and we didn't have the A, B, B block at Dumas when I was there, and then, but I taught that. And you just have to use a lot of variety and different, in that, in that long grid, just, you've got to. A human brain can only absorb so much, then you gotta do something different. And so it's professional development, and actually the classes are very enjoyable.
Yeah.
Because in a, in a, in a given period of time, you hit them with about four or five different types of instruction, and it goes quick.
Right.
Yeah, and it's enjoyable.
Teacher has to get used to it, but I loved, I loved it myself.
Uh, there's, there's two critical, difficult times in students' transitions through the years. There's one from elementary to junior high, going from one class, one teacher to seven, and then again from seven to four, right? And really what we're doing in this case is we're cutting that down to one transition. And they are, they're used to being in one room for an extended period of time in elementary. We're still changing things up, um, but it trains them much earlier.
I would say, I almost feel like that's a pro for the elementary kids, they don't have to go to as many different classrooms in a day.
Yeah.
It eases stress a little bit.
Yeah. The concern we hear are not from students on this, it's from the teachers of having to, to hold those, the junior high teachers who have seen the transition, and, and I'll be really honest on this, it's a few junior high teachers. The majority see the, the pros in this.
So Brock, just as part of our school safety stuff that I said on as well with Mike, is if we're, if we're looking to try to mix this up, hypothetically, we go a seventy-five minute class, we get kids, we've gotta get up and get down, and they're in the hallway, because we gotta make sure that, you know, the brain can only absorb what the butt can endure. And if they're up and down, how much safety are we really gonna create in our hallways with the kids out in schools trying to get up and get around, so.
Sure.
Meaning having more transitions?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that we shouldn't let them, because then we're saying, well, if we're gonna make this happen, we probably gotta make sure that we're making it comfortable for them to do their thing.
Right, right, and that's where that PD is, would, would be essential.
Cause I thought, I thought academic classes, and I have room in the cla- in the class, we would take a break, we would switch, stuff like that.
I was in the library and I had to get up and move around, get out of her sheep, I had to get out.
No way, are you serious?
Um, one of, one of the other areas of concern is, is it will increase class sizes. In a seven-period day, you've got an opportunity to spread all of your teachers' preps over seven periods. When you shrink that down to four, you have, uh, fewer places to put those preps, which then increases the number of students in classes.
What are you hearing from your teachers on that?
Um, this is one, we've talked with a handful, and they said it would be worth that, uh, because of the increased amount of prep time. So I sat down and I did, uh, a little bit of, of digging into every junior high. I did every junior high. I took out certain classes, I took out the special education classes, I took out student aides, um, student government, because those are classes, no matter what, how, what number of classes we have, those students will be in a specific area, right? So I had to take them out of the hole. But then I did an average, and I, I will preface this, this is an average, uh, of how many classes we have. I then extrapolated that down to a block schedule. It takes our classes to about three to five more students, depending on the school. Now I say that in confidence that currently, because I work in schools on staffing, our class sizes, once we get our buyouts in place and some of those things, are in the mid twenties. And so increasing from mid twenties up to, to high twenties, maybe thirty-two tops, we're still in a pretty good place. In talking with Mike Martini, who's the principal at Westfield, obviously, he, he was a principal at a junior high in Davis, they start all of their classes in the forties, um, at the junior highs. And so I think that we would be in a much better place, and we're not going to get to that level. That's just how something would be.
As a candidate, Robert can speak to this, we, in the audit that we had a couple of years ago from that group, um, down at the state legislative level, they indicated they see that we are a district that tries to put as much money as we can to the classroom level, to the teacher level, that's why our class sizes tend to be lower.
So Brock, with the schools coming on and where we're doing the realignment and the bounty stuff, will still be able to absorb that growth for several years?
Yeah.
Depending on how you find several, but.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And then the one other one, area that, uh, Mike Martini actually talked about, uh, and we do see this in the secondary high school world, is if a kid's absent, you're not seeing them for, you know, potentially four days. Because you get them on a Monday, they're absent on a Wednesday, you see them be on Friday, right?
Work of the three-day-a-week.
Sure, sure. The, uh, implementation and the increased use of Canvas and, um, you know, some of the technologies we have minimizes this impact. We do see a lot of students who jump on and, and still try and connect with their teachers, uh, but it is something that, that we would wanna be aware of. Um, and it's definitely a place where our junior high teachers would need some training, making sure their communication with the students and parents is, um, happening, you know, on the daily, daily level.
The, also another area of concern is, uh, there's been, and it's not as great as it once was, cause there's no time to just, just take the steps to your own life, mitigate this. But when I first came here and set in on the negotiations, there is a real, um, uh, between elementary and secondary. Because elementary don't have prep times, you know, and, and the half day.
Do on Wednesdays.
The Wednesday half days helps, we, we, uh, negotiated in duty-free recess. And also we've implemented, uh, like P, PE, uh, classes, those kinds of things that help for the teachers. But as soon as they see the junior high getting, uh, I, I can almost guarantee there's gonna be blowaways in the elementary. They're gonna, oh yeah, we, we're second-class citizens compared to the secondary, you know, cause we don't have a prep. And, uh, so that's, that's a very concern we need to address.
I was doing the math over here while I was looking at his numbers, and I don't think we're that discrep-. There's a big discrepancy from the junior high, the high school's way ahead of us, but the junior high and us are pretty close, so.
That's, that's a right now.
Every Wednesday's prep time.
How, how does Davis handle that though, I mean, that?
I can tell you what Ogden does, I can, I talked to Luke Rassason over there, they have built in extra prep time for their elementary teachers.
So they did try to help?
They've tried to help do that, and it, and they go every Friday, and it's a little longer time, they've got a little extra time into it, so they extended that time. So it's a twelve o'clock versus a one fifteen release.
I was interested today with my school, yeah, the, yeah, because I'm watching, and it's a, it's a, it's a virtual learning day.
Yeah, they do some of that, they build up.
I was like, what?
Yeah.
That was a new concept to me.
But they, it was on the march, they've tried to adjust it a little bit within their real system.
Like, just for attendance, I just quickly, you know, a little bit of math, Brock, I'm not as good as you, but. So if they miss one day on the A and B schedule, they're missing five percent of their time. If they miss two days, they're missing ten percent, where what we know as attendance is the biggest driver of success. Yes, so, we'd have to be more intentional on intent, on attendance.
We would, and, and, but I, and I'm gonna show my bias here a little bit more, cause I will make recommendations later to you, we just want you to think about it. But as you look at what we're about to look at here in a minute, you'll see some of the reasons why we're willing to try to beef that piece up, but, but try to provide more support, instructional support, or.
I, I just wanna say a couple things. One, I think as ninth graders, the A and B schedule would be really beneficial to our students because it gives them one more class to go towards graduation. And I've seen that not only just choice, but like, I know, so my sister-in-law lives in Davis and with the ten class, and she's like, oh yeah, my kids love it, cause they can get all their electives done in ninth grade, and then, like, by the time they're senior, they can do four. No, they do, they do four, four prep, four days of, or four classes of, um, yeah, just parent release, so they can go skiing, which I think is a little bit ridiculous, but, but, but I do like that we have one more extra class in case they wanna do concurrent, in case they wanna do, um, O-Tech or whatever, because some of those kids get, and they're like, we wanna do O-Tech, but we need a full A or B day to do that. And this gives, and like I said, with the DLI kids, I have a bunch of friends whose kids are doing DLI and leadership and full-year AP geography, and they have no wiggle room. And so then by the time they're in tenth and eleventh grade, they're trying to shove in all of these. So I think that's super helpful to our ninth graders and gets them on track with the other districts. My second thought was, I would love to just go a hundred percent at A and B and not pilot it to school. Only because I, I can see some pushback from parents in the other schools saying, hey, Westfield or Mountain View and Rocky now, their ninth graders get an extra class.
And we thought that might come up in this meeting too.
So that, I mean, that would be my thought. And then on attendance, I will say, my son apparently has been, missed a few days of school, and Power School sent me.
They have to do that sometimes.
My, Power School sent out this really nice graphic the other day that I, he's my only child to have gotten this, so I can show you guys some of that, but it, it's, it was really nice to show you as a parent.
If you miss this many days, you're just.
Yes, I will show, I'll show it.
We have a lot of great app, information we can send about attendance through that.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna pass it to you so you can look at it. So I, I think in general, that was a really nice, um.
Smart.
Thing that's coming out of Power School, so I'll show you that.
But Kelly's right, you're going to have, that's why we thought we can't have just one junior high. Now, we need a rocking, cause they're both feeding into the Westfield graduation diploma, right? But you're, we might have some parents, the reason I, I think this is on to something there, is I've heard rumblings from the South Ogden Community Council that over the past couple of years, that they really wanted the block schedule at South. So they'll see that we're doing, so we either start and really study it for a year and say, we're gonna study it.
That's, that's a, that's a how to roll it out.
Yeah.
So is your, is your suggestion about a decision?
Yeah.
Cause we're in a workshop, to do the two that you had suggested, right? Just in the new.
For a year's pilot. For a year, it's kind of what we're thinking to start, yeah.
Is there any reason?
If the board were amenable to it, here's my only concern.
Then we hear the whole district can look at it, and if it works, then we look and see.
Here's my concern, we've gone through a lot of change in the last couple of years, right? Our teachers right now are going through the heavy lift of Power School. We're now asking all, if we do that wholesale, you've got all your junior high teachers that have to adjust to teaching a longer period of time, will have to do a lot of PD. I just don't want to tip the system too, too much, that would be my only reason for not doing it. I think we're going to have parents that would wish we did, for sure.
What if we, could we speak, could we poll teachers and say, how, I mean, how would you feel with a full district rollout?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I just think, if this is something that I think will be successful, because we've seen it in other districts, that I think it's worth going full with everybody.
How long's it been since we've done a live with the AB and junior high?
Gosh, it's been.
Was it a while back in life?
Oh yeah, it's been at least twenty years, I think it's been twenty years, I want to say twenty, I was.
Even in a high school.
I didn't tell her fifty-nine, I was twenty.
Is it twenty-five?
I'm younger, twenty-three.
And you've never seen that?
Probably twenty-five.
I can just see a lot of complaints.
I don't have anything to base it on, which relative.
What I would suggest on my part for kids is that you personally decide what to do and roll it out and recommend to me.
I think that that data would be important.
If you just want the two, or if that poll went out in enough time that you could get it without sending too much.
We want to make sure we're recommending the right thing, but you know, I'm just thinking Power School, I'm usually not conservative, John, I want to get going on stuff, right? But you've got Power School rollout that they're getting used to, we're not quite there yet with Power School. And it's going to take us a little bit. And then you've also got the junior high piece that's brewing right now with the football.
Oh yeah.
I just want to.
I just want to throw all that out there, because we were talking about email.
Let's just do it all at once.
To board.
Hey, we're not recommending a true contextualization.
No.
Thank you, fuck that on top.
I wanted to.
No!
But these changes, we believe are going to help us get better, we wouldn't be recommending them, yeah.
Another thought that I had is, and you sparked this, that by the time they become seniors, they include their schedules for like to go to the ATC or other things, but we're competing with new names and other charters with this, you can finish with an associate's degree. And who would want free college in high school by the time they graduate? That's a win-win for parents.
And done before.
And CTE pathway completers, we can help voice that out, there's a lot of benefits to the more, to the type of senior year. But we wanted to kind of show it to you and get your take, I love, these are some of the things I thought might come up. If we did a survey, we need to get that quick.
Could we survey parents, too?
We probably could, yeah, Sherry, we're talking about a qualitative, a qualitative survey.
Give some of that information. I mean, with the information, the pros and the cons, and this is what other districts are doing, like, haven't seen any problems with it.
The only thing I caution you on is again, here we're sending something new. And it sends everybody over the top, and then they send the stuff in, but we're really not looking for, because it's down off emotion. If it's, and we did a very good one, if you can do the one that you did on the bond.
Yep.
Then educate people and we can get it out there. If we're really critical about doing that, then let's do it and get it to those people that we can get some good answers back. If not, then maybe the baby steps works on the recommendations, but I'm not the expert, you guys are, so.
But one of the reasons that our bond worked so well is we had a professional consultant that kept that bias out.
Right, right.
I mean, we obviously have some biases right now here that we can't, we can't ignore, we can't help it, we just do.
Well, let us see. We'll look at that, we have been, we want to be transparent, and we have tried to build a culture around, we want your feedback. And we did it with our Portrait of a Graduate, with our schedule going back to the early-out schedule on Wednesdays for secondary. We've always gathered inputs, I think that that would make sense, that we do that. But you're right, with these other little hot-button topics, junior high football out there, Power School with teachers, another change coming, I just don't want to overload the system, that would be my only.
So Brock, maybe you have a look at this, but how long, how much time do we need to transition?
Pretty quick.
To AB.
Yeah, if we were to have a pilot, Matt Patterson's been thinking about it, Quincy had heard about it, so she has thought about it. She's done some quiet polling of her staff.
Who's Quincy?
She's.
Rock film. Quincy Lovelitch.
She's received good feedback from her staff, but I think the PD component is something we want to make sure is in place. We wouldn't want to just drop it on them, especially going into summer, because they're going to want some time to look at their lessons and prepare.
What do the registrars think about that? Registrars, it might tip them over right now with Power School and that issues that they're having to work with.
At least be mindful of that.
That's what we've got to give you, so if you're okay, will you let us study it and come back to you? Probably January, we can come back to you with some more information and.
So the suggestion, again, would be made, and again, I can change. The thought is, if we need to do a pilot, do we need to concentrate on more two-school areas and get that pilot started with that type of consensus versus going way out? Because we're going to lose what Clyde's saying here, how quickly we get this out? And if we're waiting for deadlines to hit because we're doing the whole thing, is that even realistic?
I think you can do a two-phase type of an approach, but once the word gets out that we're thinking about it over there, that'll propel the effort.
Yes.
But let's come together, we can always, you, always have in the back of your mind, can we do this in one, one song?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think it's time, I think the right time is now for the conversation, because we want to set that new code up in a way that we don't want to have to switch midstream after one year, after the first year it's open, and then switch again, you know, that doesn't make any sense.
Again, that comes through, we have to make these changes, we can't get our feedbacks.
That's what I'm wondering, that's my only concern, I want to be cognizant of that. Plus, as I talked to you and Sherry talked to you a little bit here for the last half hour around some other areas that, these things that we're trying to put in though, I'm telling you structurally are meant to help us in the areas that we're going to be talking about next. So keep that in mind. So we'll look at it, okay? All right, thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Don't excuse it, no, don't get in trouble.
All right, Sherry, thanks for your patience, we're running a tad behind, and I want you all to know, I've given you, I usually do far more information for you to take away if interested than that we're going to cover. Okay, so don't, Janice, stay with me, don't run over into the street, okay, into the traffic. But we do, as you remember, and all of this is in your file, in your folder, okay? But we did put a timeline together as I came into this role that we stayed pretty true to in terms of when we need to have a strategic plan developed for Weaver School District. This is required by statute, through our audit, that we went through the legislative audit. We know that the planning and budget office of the governor's office directs strategic plans. I don't know why the planning and budget office does that, but that's the one where we have all of our audits come from. But one of the things we were directed to do as the first district to go through that is to revamp our strategic plan. So that's what we're doing. We're right here, we're right here in October, and we are pretty much on track of some of the things that we've been doing all across this timeline. The next step is to by the end of April, have a solid strategic plan in place. I just want to show you what's in your file, and I'm going to, we're going to end with just showing you where we are as a district in terms of how our students are doing. This is the strategic plan for USBE. This is, this is not what I'm envisioning, this is pages and pages, but I wanted you to see it because it's very well done. This really, you know, has a lot to show in terms of how they put it together, how they structured it, the resources that are embedded in it. I would like to do something a little smaller scale to this, okay? This one from Alpine District, two-pager. Very easy for patrons to understand what our focus is. They're a big district, and this is on their website. I want to point to you at the top of this one right here where it says Board of Education Moral Imperative. A lot of districts, instead of calling it the Board of Education's mission statement, they're calling it a moral imperative. This is the guiding phrase that we're going to have as a, I'm going to ask this body to come up with to guide our strategic plan going forward. So I wanted to provide you an example, the Alpine has come up with one, you can see it's a very simple, general statement, but it's all encompassing. Right, and I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, we could be looking at some examples like that. But we're going to need this board to come up with a mission statement that kind of would help us drive and align our strategies to. I've given you another example, here's Canyons, they just went through this. Canyons is only three pages, three or four pages, and it talks about the areas of focus, their mission, their vision statement, and kind of the goals that they've set for their district. I envision that our strategic plan will have a three-year timeframe and then a five-year, okay, to where we want to be in five years. This one is Ogden's, it's a two-pager. I love it, because it's very, very easy to get out there. We need to educate and make sure our folks know what we're working on. I'd love you to take a, put your eyes on that one and see what you think of that one, that one's very simple. And then last but not least, we, I gave you some data, and this, Sherry had already presented this to you, and she did such a nice job on this. But this shows you, we did a survey on Portrait of a Graduate competencies. In our strategic plan legally, we have to be aligned to the competencies that USBE has put out. These are things we want our kids to leave our schools being able to do, all right? And who they, who they really are when they leave our schools. And I shared that data with you so you could see what our educators said were important competencies are most important, and then also what our parents felt were most important. So we're going to share a lot of data with you to take away. What I envision with President Whitson's permission is that the next few board study sessions, I'm going to need about ten minutes a session where we'll just show you where we are on each part of this plan as we're putting it together and get your feedback on it, does that make sense? Last but not least, on your agenda today, I left you a lot of information on the back page, okay? Don't worry about absorbing it all, but right down here at the very bottom of your back page, you can see, it says right here, developing focal areas, goal setting. We've done listening sessions, we have looked at all of the data, and Sherry's going to show you the highlights here to end the meeting, where our gaps are, where our kids are deficient, and we've identified pretty squarely the six areas that we feel like we need to focus on right here. Now that, those could change, the titles of those areas could change, but we're talking early childhood learning slash literacy, teaching and learning, effective educators, talent development, and employee wellness, all kind of go together. We know that right now, we've got to provide more support for our teachers, while they're struggling. Our teachers are struggling, and we'll be sharing some more information about that. But for the most part, they're doing what they do, they're just, they're staying upright. But we do believe we need to provide them more support, especially around wellness. We also know that safe and healthy schools, making sure kids feel like they have a sense of belonging at their schools, and that their wellbeing is important. So that's area four. Parent and community outreach, we'd like to do a better job around that and build some goals around that. And then making sure, this is where Robert and his crew will come into play, that we're properly aligning our fiscal resources to the things we're focused on. So we can pare these down, we can combine, but those are the areas over the last year and a half that I've been in this role, and a lot of data and study and listening sessions that we've done have kind of come to the forefront, does that make sense? Just wanted to share that. What I've asked Sherry to do today is to put together kind of an overview of where we are in comparison to other districts around us, and also just kind of this overall state level. This, I gave you one piece in here, it's hard to read. This is not something Sherry's going to cover, but I just barely got this information. I want you to see where I put a little star by our name. That right there indicates that forty percent, forty-one percent of our kids in third grade are reading at third grade benchmark level. Their reading proficiency is where it needs to be. You can see where we stand though compared to other districts. We've got work to do, is what I'm trying to tell you, we've got work to do.
Do we know where we're at with our high, because I know we had this conversation last year on board meeting about our tenth and eleventh graders on grade level, where.
That is what maybe a K-12 literacy piece is going to come into play and we'll be able to bring you that.
Okay.
Yeah, she's got it.
Because we know that our tenth and eleventh graders are declining, we have what, like ninety percent of kids aren't on grade level in tenth and eleventh grade?
Literacy's going like this.
Yeah, so I feel like, I know we focus so much on third graders, but.
Or upper grades.
I have a couple of thoughts that I can go ahead to your question.
So Sherry, you have the clicker, you can go. And I saw, Sherry, can I just tell you, Sherry has embraced a different role, a lot of new role. She's always been, she's, I don't know how Sherry's been up right over the last ten years of being over curriculum and instruction and assessment and school improvement. But we're asking her to take on a more intensive role and a side-by-side role with our school leaders to help them put school improvement plans together to really address their needs. And so Sherry's embraced that, and I want to thank her for that. But Sherry, I'll turn this over to you, tell us how our kids are doing.
Gina, really quick.
Yes.
Do you have answers to all six of these?
Yes, in terms of the gaps and different things.
So the issues that you have that you're looking to discuss?
Yeah.
Or do you need support, and if so, what can we do to support you in them?
What we're going to do, John, what I'm going to propose to the board is certain goals underneath each of those areas to try to make sure we address them.
So we'll move forward, but that's.
Yes, that's where we're.
I just want to make sure you have the support to do what you need to do, so we can get where we need to be.
If you feel those are important areas, that will be part of your board imperative too. We're going to need to spend time in a study session to make sure that you agree with those six areas, okay? So I just wanted to introduce it to you. All right, go ahead, Sherry.
Awesome, well, I appreciate the time, I can't imagine a better way to end a Friday meeting than looking at data, yes. It's kind of the coolest thing ever, yeah.
Do you want to give a Michael Six, like the lady in the cat, I just turned the store used to do, number for number?
Unfortunately, yes.
I'm sorry, call me.
Yeah, okay, you're up.
Yeah, but it's not because I'm keeping numbers.
No, this is exciting.
He's talking to me.
We're trying to get to work.
So I have kind of a profile for you, first through twelfth grade data. So I know that this is going to be a lot to digest. What I will do after we finish, I'll just email you this whole presentation, so that you can take a little bit deeper dive. And there's especially the comparisons among different districts. That, when we were told we were eighth from the bottom overall, there's some interesting things that we've made some growth. So I think that's going to be exciting as we come to that. This is talking about Acadian's reading and mathematics, the purple is mathematics, it's only been around for the last two years. You know, as Gina spoke to the fact that we need to have sixty percent of our students reading on grade level. The kind of salmony color is reading, and you'll notice over the last few years, twenty-one, twenty-two, which was an interesting year anyway, sixty-four percent of our kids on average with first through third grade were achieving typical or above typical progress. Notice we don't include kindergarten students, typically when we analyze state data, we don't, because kindergarten's not a required grade. So we typically only throw in the first through third.
Really?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we do full-time now?
That's going to make a difference, I believe.
It will, it will definitely, and we'll, you know, we'll take a look at that keep data, whether or not we maintain that. Mathematics, seventy-one percent this last year, so that was an exciting, exciting growth.
Yeah, it's a huge growth.
From sixty to seventy-one. English, we did go down just a little bit, and you'll see that trend as we move through the entire data component. This is grade by grade over the last few years. So just kind of an interesting look at where our students are doing well. You'll notice that that third grade, we went from sixty-eight to sixty-six, sorry. So those students, so sixty-eight to sixty-six in third grade, that's a marked decline. Our first grade students actually had some huge growth there, so that was a happy, happy look. And then, of course, the first through third grade average is on the complete right side.
And are we still, we're still seeing that COVID has like made huge impacts like that?
It did, and it made an impact all the way up through, when you start looking at those students now taking RICE testing, they missed some foundational components early on, and our teachers are having to work double time to get those kids back to where they need to be. But I think you'll be pleased with some of the growth that's there. This is Acadian's math, remember, it's only been around two years, so we'll see what happens this year. Lovely second grade grades, and then overall, eleven points coming up, so that's very, that's very nice. Our elementary students in grades three through six take the English Language Arts RICE test. You'll see Weaver School District in the blue, and the state average is in the yellow on the right of each cluster. I only do usually five years' worth of data, this is five years because we didn't have twenty-twenty, right? Twenty-twenty was eliminated from the data set, it didn't test. And again, as Gina said, we are low in English Language Arts. And again, as, as Gina said, we are low in English Language Arts. We are below the state average. Mathematics, this is looking grades three through six again. And we've kind of closed that gap.
This is great. This is wonderful right here.
Yeah, this is, this is what we've wanted. We, our teachers have worked really hard, lots of additional training to get to that point. So you, you notice that the state's still at forty-four percent. Just keep in mind that the way these tests were written, they're norm reference tests. They're not criteria and reference tests where everybody did very well, you know, ninetieth percentile and so forth. That's not how these tests are written, so we're hoping to go higher. Here's elementary science. Again, where the blue state is yellow. We did implement during this time a completely new program with elementary science. So that has impacted us a little bit in our performance, but we are starting to come back. You'll notice just in the last two years since twenty-twenty-one, when that program was implemented, we've come from forty-two to forty-four point nine. So that's nice to see. Now, as we move to secondary in language arts, this is combining RISE scores, so seventh and eighth, and then the Utah Spire Plus, which is taken in grades nine and 10. You'll notice that large gap between Weaver School District and the state in literacy. You see that persist on through elementary all the way up through. And you'll see it again as we look at ACT data. We did come up quite a bit, a statistically significant amount from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. But we just have, we have room to improve. Here's our mathematics secondary. Made some nice growth from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. But you'll notice we are still playing some catch-up from prior to the pandemic, you know, the two thousand and nineteen levels. And there's our secondary science. That did also receive a new program in twenty-twenty-one. So there will be, that dip in twenty-twenty-two was pretty expected. We're coming back though. You know that half of our accountability system, more than half in the elementary ranks, is based on growth of students. And it's calculated using something called a student growth percentile, which means every student is ranked against their similarly performing academic peers. So we rank, you know, Dave and I would only be in the same bucket if we had exactly the same scale scores over the last up to three years. So it's a very nice way to measure growth. You're aiming for, it's kind of like when you have a baby and you take the baby into the doctor, and you want to make sure that when they measure the length, the weight, and the head circumference, that if your baby's in the fiftieth percentile, you're like, my baby's okay. I'm feeding them, they're growing. That's kind of the same with this. You want to aim for the fiftieth percentile. However, because we're working with human beings here, the state has agreed that anywhere between the fortieth and sixtieth percentile is equivalent to one year of growth. Okay, fortieth to sixtieth percentile. So kind of keep that in mind. Anything above seventy is exemplary. These are our last three years' worth of growth percentiles across the board. So this is grades three through eleven, well, three through ten in ELA Math and grades four through ten in Science. So a little lower than where we would want them to be, right? They're, they're getting real close to that fortieth percentile. This is the piece that I thought you might be most interested in. I know it's super small, but when you get the, the data set, you can take a closer look. I looked at all forty-one districts and compared their data from twenty-nineteen to present. The, then I re-ranked everybody based on their proficiency scores and did it again for, for growth scores. So that you can kind of take a look. Weber is always highlighted in the yellow. The red line is the state's average for that year. Okay, so you can see that typically, back in the day, cash was the district to beat. They were always at the very top. We're starting to see some other districts emerge. North Summit has made an incredibly strong showing. You'll see that across the board. The nice thing that we are seeing, this is English Language Arts across the board, grades three through, three through ten. Question?
No, Gina was just saying something. I was just wondering, look at where Tinty's kids in twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three.
You're right there.
Yep.
But if you look on this reading proficiency, they're fourth down on the one that you gave us. So there's a big.
So this is including only RISE and Utah Spire Plus. When you're looking at that data, you're looking at Acadia's, which is a completely different type of test. It's much more about fluency as opposed to deep conceptual knowledge that these tests are making.
How come Davis is killing it?
Can I, can I, I had to stand up because this, this chart causes me anxiety.
Robert loves it because it's a chart.
I don't.
If you compare it with an A B schedule, it's like.
First of all, this is not satisfactory where we are. We, we are so much better than this. I also want you to remember, she talked about twenty-twenty pandemic, we didn't measure. Look where we were before pandemic, right? Here's the pandemic. We're still, we're starting, we're coming up a little bit. Here's the state average. But here, here's my, my worry. All of those schools across the top are staying pretty consistent. So we've really tried to figure out what are those school districts doing?
Yeah, like Canyons.
No matter what, they're staying consistent. And we've discovered, there's two things, maybe three. The instructional coaching in those districts is strong. And I've been talking a little bit about instructional coaching, how important it is that our teachers understand what they're teaching, the standards they're teaching, and we get really focused in on that. The other thing that we're seeing in those districts is they have two systems that are working. And we are working for the last year and a half and continue to work. One is our PLC process. We are getting, we're going deeper on that. We have really immersed our administrators on the importance of their leadership as instructional leaders and making sure that we have a really strong professional learning community mindset in our schools and practices going on. Those districts right there, they don't mess around. That's, that's the one system that's working very good. The other.
The PLC system.
Yeah, say that again.
The PLC system.
Yes, yes. The second, the, the third system, instructional coaching PLC is the third system. And we've, we've been missing this in our district. We were starting to kind of delve into it right before the pandemic, and that was the MTSS system. And I'm, I'm getting into the weeds with y'all. But the MTSS system is our system that makes sure that every child, no matter where their struggle is, is supported. There's interventions put in place for those children academically, behaviorally, and socially and emotionally. We're putting in a robust MTSS system right now in our district. We're, we're just getting, those districts have had MTSS going in their district for years. We're just, we're just getting going on that. So as part of our strategic plan, I can tell you, I, 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 this is, I believe in my heart that we're going to naturally rise here. I really do. I want to tell you that, but we've got foundational systems that we're trying to get in place right now. And that's what we'll, you'll see in our strategic plan, some of our goals around those, implementation of those three systems.
Could be that afternoon again.
So MTSS, which is.
Multi-tiered systems.
Multi-tiered. And multi-tiered systems of support. And I'm going to share a little bit more what that is with you as we go. PLCs are professional learning communities where teachers work in groups and they look at how a child's doing and figure out which ones are struggling and where their struggle is more intensively. That was the reason we went to Power School because Power School would give us the data we needed to track those kids. But Power School's not quite there yet, and so.
Yeah, we'll do.
It'll get there. And then the third system is this instructional coaching, instructional piece where we're supporting our teachers more intensively in our schools around good instruction.
So help me, because I would expect Ogden to be below us.
Yep.
I would not expect Granite in all four areas to be below us.
Why not?
Why do they not, do they not have any of the stuff we're talking about?
Granite's very socially, emotionally, or socially economically impacted very much. Very much like Ogden's.
They are?
Yeah.
But it's a nice thing. So then I go back up again to one of them ones that's doing extremely well.
Yep.
And I go Tinty. Tinty's got five kids that go to the elementary.
That's part of the reason, right?
That's what I'm thinking.
So N size does make a difference.
Typically, the, the district that's most like us is Negro.
Yep.
And so, so point Negro out.
So they're just a little bit ahead. Forty-five, they're still ahead of us.
You're talking about N size.
N size.
Compensation.
I always talk about one elementary.
Like we compare ourselves to Davis because they're geographically close, but they're not really a similar.
Just going to the night.
Who's going tonight?
But still, it's hard to see Davis do so well when they're neighbors.
Hey, but Davis is the largest suburban district. We, Canyons, Canyons is a very high socioeconomic. They do have some pockets of poor.
Same with Alpine.
But, but, same with Alpine, but there's no reason why we can't be as well as Canyons, Davis, Alpine. Yeah, we, we have this, as far as socioeconomic goes.
Right, we get the systems in place and get more strategic, this is, it's going to rock.
Can I say something?
Yes.
This is my coaching comment. You can't take talent and mess it up.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, they got all those things going for them, but they also doing something right too. Right, so, I mean, it's easy to say, well, we can't compare the other, you know? You got to find what they're doing.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
We're, socio-economically, we're, we're in the same boat as Alpine. Um, I got another comment to make, if that's okay. It's a sobering comment, but when, when, when you throw out the instructional coaches, this and that, it does take financial resources.
It does.
And look at where we're at. For low three decades, we have had one of the lowest tax rates along Los Edge Farm. The only, the only two that are lower than us are Murray and, and Salt Lake. And they have large tax bases. It's hard for us to put in the same things that Davis has. If we had Davis's tax rate, just, we would be raising.
Or North Summits.
Well, North Summit's a small district, so it's hard to compare. But if we had Davis's tax rate, we'd have another fourteen million dollars quicker. I'm just saying.
You won't hurt capital in North Summit.
So the tax rate is huge.
We're realigning some resources though and trying to make sure that as we put this plan together, we've got the resources we do have being leveraged a little bit.
Gina, the thing that, for me, as a forty-two years in the school, being that I appreciate that they're looking at all three of those systems, PLCs, instructional coaching, MTSS, are done during the school.
Yeah.
With your teachers who no longer want to commit time outside of the school.
That's true.
And there's, there's one other piece to add to what Gina was saying about schools and districts that are being extremely effective. I've taken teams to go visit different schools. The other piece that, that maybe is missing is a focus on the data. So almost all the schools in cash, when you go visit them, Washington, there's data walls.
That's tangent to the PLC, right?
Correct. That is why we've recreated her role because we're going to get a lot more centered on the data piece going.
What's a data wall, define a data wall?
So it's tracking exactly the progress of students within, so like a, a team, a third grade team should have every kid represented with ELA Math and Science, how they are progressing from, you know, at least week to week.
You can almost look at it.
Work in school, in school.
It's a scoreboard, we got. And district offices have them. I mean, you know, how are different schools doing? So I think that's an important component. It's not really hard to implement. And our schools that are doing it, you know, like the Hoopers and the Plain Cities.
Rocketer.
But they, they have data walls, and you should go visit. They, they're pretty impressive.
A lot of that came, I, I just have to go back to my experience. A lot of that came during the period when we were focused on the MTSS.
Yeah.
Which was fifteen years ago.
The pendulum swings again.
We're going to swing it back, but I feel very confident. I, when I see that though, I don't, I'm not going to sleep tonight because I'm going to lay awake and see that where we are yellowing because we are, our kids, our families, our teachers, we're so much better than that. We just need to get more strategic, more strategic, more focused, more intentional on a few things.
The very word strategic says.
Yeah.
Strategic.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But our people need to know what were our goals are and what our strategies are and what our initiatives are as well. We've got to do a good job when we get this plan down of communicating that. Right, what we're, what we're about. And that's going to be the second part of the process.
And do pay attention too, I mean, when you look back to twenty-nineteen, our proficiency was forty. Because if you just look side-by-side at the, at the tables, it almost looks like we're, you know? So just watch the, the significance of the data. Yeah, we're lower, but we're higher in the rankings because, you know, everyone's still recovering from the pandemic. So this is growth. This is a happy one. Okay, so remember, we wanted the growth like the baby to be around the fiftieth percentile. Forty to sixty is acceptable. So take a look at us. The state, the largest entity will always be at the middle, will always be at fifty. So the state's always at fifty on growth. Okay, so you can take a peek at us. We are, in this case, substantially higher on our growth from just twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
And I, I don't want to attribute it all to one thing, Sherry, but I think, I, I think it bears repeating. We have, we've really been more intensively focused on the PLC system this last year and a half. We're adding MTSS in. But I, I attribute it to our teachers understanding better this, this process of tracking students at our school level one by one has got to be the way forward, and they're understanding that better, yeah.
I just knowledge too. You guys weren't there, but Gina supplemented, rolled out some of these things to our administrators. And you could just see their wheels turning, and they're going, okay, okay, you know, just the knowledge that I'm going to, we can do better, you know? It's just like a coach telling the athletes, you know, this is where we're at. And they got pride. They want to do better. Yeah, I think things are, I think things are on an upswing for sure.
Absolutely.
Can I add a thought to that? In the schools of the past, we also, we also focused on the fact that if you're getting growth from your children, if the children are all growing, you're automatically impacting proficiency as well. Because if kids are growing, proficiency is changing.
It might take a minute, but we're getting there.
So the growth is a huge indicator.
Yep, so that's very happy. Here's mathematics. Kind of popped around a little bit, but we're, we're effectively closing that gap between us and the state. So remember, red line again is the state. Notice again, you're seeing our high flyers, cash and North Summit popping up at the top. Here's growth for mathematics.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so we're again, above the targeted range, which is lovely. And look at that immense growth, the change from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three.
Gina, how many of our schools have currently an instructional coaching?
All of our elementaries. And then our secondary, probably about half right now. Yep, and we want to have a hundred percent, we want one in every one.
That was just secondary by the end of the year. And are they embedded in the PLC pro?
Yes.
Program?
Yes.
Gina, if I said, the difference that Rob was talking about earlier, the right now in the secondary, they're doing it on their prep.
Yep.
But the A and B block will give them a day. So they got, they got a day that they're doing instructional, because they get four classrooms. That's a big difference.
One stretch here for all, the whole faculty. So hardly anything.
No.
Yeah.
We were higher, whatever, yeah, that's very good.
It's a blank line.
So here's our science. Remember, we had the change in curriculum that probably had some impact there. And there's our growth in science.
We've got work to do.
So, yes. I thought you might want to know on the higher end from high school. We sometimes don't get a lot of data. But here's our AP participation. So this is just the number of students who participated in AP. I'm sure one of the things that comes to mind is why, why did we peak? And then we're coming back down. And the reason for that is the kind of split emphasis on AP versus concurrent enrollment.
I was going to say, I've seen the trend amongst parents that I know that are starting to encourage their kids more to concurrent than AP. I mean, like, for example, my son took six AP classes, and he passed all of them with threes. But he's attending BYU, and BYU only took two of his AP classes. But they gave him nine credits of concurrent enrollment from Weaver High, Weaver State, which were like all elective courses. And I was like, he passed AP Calculus, but they wouldn't take it. So it's like.[1703.46] And I was like, he passed AP Calculus, but they wouldn't take it, so it's like.
Weber State is at our state value concurrent.
So, it's like, as a parent, now I look at it, and I'm like, okay, he's took six AP classes, only got credit for two of them, but he got sports marketing, entrepreneurship, and EMS credit at the college, so why are we, like, for me, I'm like, let's focus on concurrent and not on AP if they just pass the class and they get the credit.
It depends on the child.
Yeah. No, it totally depends on the, on the child, but I've seen a lot of momentum from parents focusing, we're ditching AP and we're going to concurrent.
As a former AP teacher. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You're absolutely.
Um, so BYU is unusual in the fact that they don't typically accept AP credits where other state-supported institutions do.
Oh, no.
BYU can make their own rules on that.
They're worse that way.
Um, so, yeah, they, they just accept.
They make it on a lot of.
But we wanna keep this program going, because these are programs with rigor, right? And they help raise the bar for everybody, and we wanna get more kids involved in them. That will be part of our goal setting as well.
So, this is showing the number of students, but understanding that many students take multiple AP tests, just like your son did. So, this is the number of AP tests taken. Again, you see.
So, my previous one was just AP classes?
This is just the number of students who were enrolled.
So, some students might be taking three AP classes in a, in a year.
Correct.
But it's, it's basically in the title, so students testing.
Uh, sorry, it's the number of students who took and then took a, a test.
Because some AP students won't take the test.
Yeah.
I know a lot of kids who are like, I heard this test is really hard.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna spend ninety-five dollars to fit, to not test.
True. This is, Robert, this is the number of students who took one or more tests.
Okay, what's the next one?
So, this is how many tests were taken.
Oh, that's horrible.
Okay? So, yeah, it's, it's just a little bit, a little bit different. Um, this is the percent of our students who had passing AP scores. So, we've kinda hovered right about the same level for a, a long number of years. The one thing that, as I kind of have dug into the data a little bit more, um, that's a little bit concerning, is our mean score has been coming down. Um, when you're talking those scores only range from one to five, a change in a mean score from two point nine two to two point eight, that's a lot. So, anyway, that's something that we'll need to be watching over the next few years. Um, we talked about the fact that concurrent enrollment is pulling students. Look at that tremendous growth. Remember, two thousand nineteen, eighteen nineteen was the spike in enrollment in AP. And after that, we started coming down. Well, look what's happening with concurrent enrollment.
And there's more concurrent enrollment options.
Correct.
For any of the schools.
For any of the options, yep, yep.
Yeah, and it, it does depend. Um, Weber High does, probably, they're more well-known for AP. Fremont pushes concurrent, and it just depends on the school and kind of the local community as well, what people want. Um, this is our ACT data. I usually wouldn't have put this as a line graph because it's not. It, it's discrete data, but the reason I did it is I wanted people to question what went on in twenty twenty. Why is there that spike, right? Did our kids get smarter all of a sudden? What happened in twenty twenty was the pandemic. Our test was scheduled for the Tuesday after we closed schools. So, we weren't able to get it. So, what was done instead is students received a voucher to test during one of the summer tests when we were allowed to come back together. So, what happened?
Not every kid took it.
Correct. Only those students who were really motivated to come and test actually.
Less than average score.
Correct. So, you'll see that, you know, we had that, that bump up to nearly twenty-three, which, remember, eighteen is college entry. They're considering, if you get an overall of eighteen, you're pretty okay for entering college.
And those are motivating kids.
Yeah, exactly.
Pretty much, every, uh, every junior pretty much takes it.
Yeah, so our.
But not in twenty twenty, is what you're saying.
Correct. Not in twenty twenty, they didn't because it was a voucher, and so you took it if you wanted to. Um, yeah, for about the last seven years, we've been giving, as part of our taxpayer dollars, we've been giving all juniors the opportunity to take the ACT during school time. So, it's really encouraged kids to leave themselves that option. Because some kids will say, I'm not going to college. Well, if they take the ACT, at least they have the option out there that maybe they just like to.
I think they're all ACT.
But that average is, last year, the year before, is all above eighteen.
Wow.
So, okay, so what?
The composite.
So, I put this, this little table together. The twenty twenty I put in red just to keep us all remembering that that was not the same group of students. Um, the thing that, that intrigues me about this, our composite score has come down from twenty eighteen to present by one whole point. When your scale's thirty-six, a full point is a lot. So, that's something that I'm watching and looking at some tools, um, for example, Schmuph, that will help students prepare. This, the benchmarks are interesting. I put them up at the top. What the benchmarks are is these are the scores that a student would need to get in order to have, they, they've looked at data from students for thirty years, okay? If a student earns an English score of eighteen or higher, they have a seventy-five percent chance of obtaining a C or higher in that corresponding college course. And they have about a fifty percent chance of getting a V or higher, okay? Same with the reading benchmark. So, if they're twenty-two or higher, they have a seventy-five percent chance of having that count for credit in the college.
We're never, except for twenty twenty.
Unless we really do make impact literacy and reading in our district, K through twelve, and we've got a bracket.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or time.
That would bring it up.
Same with math.
It would.
These are reading-based tasks a lot.
Yes, and even the science is hugely correlated to literacy. If I can't read and, and comprehend what I'm reading, then there's some problems there.
Literacy will be a main goal setting place on our strategic plan.
Here's another happy thought, graduation rates. Weber District is now the gold, State of Utah is the blue. And I just got today the raw data for graduation rates for twenty twenty-three. So, I'll add those on before I send it out to you. They're, they're preliminary still, but, um, things are looking pretty nice. Ninety-one percent of our students noticed we have increased since twenty thirteen, which is no long ago, um, by ten full percent points.
Is this, is this the, like, so, does ninety-one percent include just the seniors for that year?
Yes.
So, the amount of enrolled seniors that actually graduated?
Yeah, I think it's a nine percent, really a nine percent.
It's the, so it's the four-year cohort of students.
Okay, so it's a four-year, that's what I was starting, it's a four-year cohort, okay?
It's a four-year cohort, yeah.
So, that ninety percent could've dropped out.
Yeah.
In two years.
Could've, yeah.
Very lovely.
But any time during that four years.
One thing that has helped us a lot on this, yes, we've, we've gotten a little bit more targeted in some of the instructional practices, but one thing that really brought us up very quickly is we started tracking students better. So, we implemented a plan in the ninth grade to start looking at exit codes, because we didn't have them in correctly. So, we were being counted for students that weren't really ours anymore. So, anyway, that helped us a lot, but we've come up ten percent. That's awesome. This is a little bit different data now. So, this is not academic data. This is data coming from our Panorama tool. So, the Panorama measures things about school climate, um, teacher-student relationships, and student well-being. So, um, it, students in elementary receive a different, uh, survey than students in the secondary. The questions are very similar, um, they still go after the same ideas, but they're crafted a little bit easier to understand.
What's our opt-out rate?
Yeah, so we, this time, we blew Panorama away. They asked for about a sixty percent participation rate um, in order to, to validate the data, to say that it really is representative, and we were at seventy-six percent participation.
Which was last year?
This is just finished. It just finished.
Oh, so we just did one that just finished.
Yeah, so they, as a matter of fact, they called and said, what were you doing to get that many people to participate, so?
But I think our principals and Sherri's great leadership. Our principals want, they're more data-driven. We're trying to get them to be more data-driven around how they're doing in their schools, so I think that factors in as well.
So, I think this is an important one to highlight with you. This is teacher-student relationships. There's questions asked about if you were to come back in the four years, would your teacher be excited to see you? Um, secondary students answer this, and they have to answer about, um, at least half of their teachers. So, the questions are like, okay, if this is true, at least half of your teachers say that yes, you do, you do think they would be excited to see you. Um, other things about, you know, the, the, the feeling between the student and the teacher in the classroom. So, check this out, in grades three through six, um, this just fall, it just barely finished, we were seven, in the seventy-seven percent range. Um, nationwide, because this is a nationally benchmarked survey, this is in, in almost the eightieth percentile nationwide. So, that's, that's awesome. Um, we always note too that there is, is typically a drop from fall to spring. So, you know, kids get tired, and maybe they've had some experiences, whatever, so we'll watch for that. In our secondary, so the students in grades seven through twelve, um, they were at fifty-four percent rating their teacher-student relationships. In elementary, that relationship between the teacher and student is by definition a little bit more robust because they have that one teacher all day, right?
I'm sorry.
Secondary is, is just a little bit different. Um, this is about at the twentieth percentile with national benchmarks. So, you might say, well, that's, it's that way nationwide.
And John, that's what gets to your question earlier. That's why we've got this number four on here. We're gonna really go to work on that, that piece.
Number four.
Sorry.
On the back of your. In the back of another focal area.
Yeah.
So, this is sense of belonging. Um, these are questions about, you know, does the student feel a part of the school community and of their classroom? Uh, near the ninetieth percentile in our elementaries, and then, uh, twentieth percentile in our secondaries. So, we do have some work to do in the secondaries with respect to student well-being, and there's sense of belonging engagement within the class.
And one of the things I found out, um, about this too, Sherri, if I just add up, one of the things we're learning too is this score reflects or can be reflective of the burnout rate of your teachers.
Absolutely.
Their ability to engage with the kid and build a relationship with the kid. And we're hearing a little bit that that, at the secondary level, we're, that we, they need more time to, that's one of the reasons we're looking at this block schedule. It does increase the number of classes a child has, but more time with the child is, we're thinking about in terms of maybe that would help with this a little bit.
You don't think it'll increase burnout?
Well, that, with more prep time, we're trying to balance, so they'll have more prep time on top of it, so. But we've gotta talk to a lot more teachers, John, around that, 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 we wanna collect a little bit more data there.
So, this is self-management. These questions are asking things like, can you stay on task? Um, are you getting to your homework assignments and, and able to not, uh, need to come distracted?
This particular one is a little more internal. The others have been a little more external.
Correct, correct.
It's like being around me versus what's happening inside.
And you bring up a really interesting point. These are reported down to the student level. The one that is not is the teacher-student relationships. And the reason for that is we wouldn't want a teacher pulling up their data and going, oh, John, you don't, you don't think I like you. Right, I mean, that, that would be really awkward in a classroom, so we don't report that. It's only at the aggregate level. But the others are reported right down to the child so that we can, we can intervene with the MTSS. Um, this is social awareness, so, um, their ability to interact with their peers, um, to perform appropriately, uh, within a school day. So, check that out, uh, near the fiftieth percentile in the secondary and ninetieth in the elementary. This is grit. This is something we have struggled with. It's a focus in our schools that are, um, doing leader in me. It's a huge focus for, um, that program, and I know that this is something teachers have been concerned about, specifically since we've returned from the pandemic. This is a hard one, right? And, I mean, take a look at our, our scores in the secondary level, that's. Yeah, yeah, that's hard, and there's, there's lots of ways to build the grit and endurance.
When we talk about grit, is it like a student's ability to do hard things?
Yeah.
Is that kind of struggle?
That's exactly right.
Yep.
Keep going.
Yep.
And every year when we do this, I release all the questions to the parents, so they have the opportunity to opt out of the survey. Um, but, yeah, and I can include all the questions if you would like to have that with it too.
It's difficult back now, when the, uh, sixty-three percent puts you at the seventieth percentile, fifty-three puts you at the twentieth.
Compared to the.
Yeah, it's an interesting.
That is.
So, that, that's concerning. That's very concerning in terms of.
So, to be at a seventieth percentile, what would our percent, if, if we had a, in the seven twelve, if we're at seventieth percentile, would our, would our percent be sixty-four or higher?
If I remember right, it was around sixty-four, sixty-five. So, it doesn't have to make that big a gain. Yeah, and it, it shows you that right in Panorama. It shows what you need to be at, to be at the next level. So, I think sixty-four, sixty-five. This is emotion regulation with the behaviors that we're seeing in our schools, and I'm sure you guys have heard about that being a, a, an issue for our teachers. One more piece that, you know, is, is causing our teachers to burn out. Um, emotion regulation, this is student ranking of their own ability. It, it's kind of interesting. They're in the ninetieth percentile on both of them.
That's a nationwide issue right now. We're having emotional regulation problems across the country right now. Our adults are having a difficult time with emotional regulation.
Explain to me the most regulation again.
So, emotion regulation is, um, some of the questions are things like, if you had some sort of a disagreement with a person in your class, could you resolve that, and could you resolve it appropriately?
Dignity.
Dignity.
So, being at the ninetieth percentile, does that mean they feel like they can regulate their emotions, or they can't regulate their emotions?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's kind of what you're.
So, it feels, it's that they can. They're, they're saying, yes, I can do that. I can work with others in my class. I can deal with.
But maybe they're not actually doing it.
Well, when, when a fifty-four is at the ninetieth percentile nationwide, that's telling us that nationwide, this is very low.
Got it, I get what you're saying. Got it.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, anyway, students are, are saying, yeah, we sort of got it, but, yeah.
So, how is the question for Dave? Dave, how do we account for the fact that on every matrix, our elementary are doing better, far better?
I can say a thing that I think, um, but I'm not an expert in the secondary. I think that your relationships with children and teachers are, are more substantially stable than they are when you're pinned to a class or classroom.
I agree. Hundred percent. I think if, I've seen it with my kids, like unless you're involved in something, whether it's a sport or a club or something else, it's so easy for a kid to go in and out of a school and feel unseen or that they don't belong, whereas when you have one teacher, that teacher is invested with you for the whole.
Whether they're attending, yes, another hand, you know.
Yeah.
I guess I have a follow-up question. So, we're looking at going from seven teachers to eight.
But, but then, but then, you, you are longer with them.
So, longer with them.
Every other day, but you still.
We believe we'll have more support built in to help them feel better about the experience of the class. That would be a goal, right about.
Because you're being in a classroom longer.
Makes your work.
I don't know. That's why, do you wanna go to school pilot or do it wholesale, right?
Absolutely.
John, one of the things too, that Panorama has done some extensive research about why some of these things are happening, and the latest article that I was reading attributes a lot of the struggle in the secondary realm to social media. So, in the elementary, they're not on Facebook and Instagram. Yeah.
So, so that, the same dynamic is a nationwide phenomenon. Do the elementaries do better than the secondary?
It is, yeah. Yeah, but social media has definitely made an impact, and when a child already feels like maybe they don't fit in, you know, they're not at the party that everyone else posted about, and, you know.
Also.
Well, that's something I think that we, we share with our public though. I mean, this is one of the down.
I think the problem is, like, as a parent, I fundamentally know all that, but then when you're dealing with your thirteen and fourteen-year-olds on a practical level.
Hard to tell them.
It's just so different. Like, I could tell her, like, this is hurting your emotional and social well-being, and they're like, you don't even know anything about me. Virgil! It's so hard.
That's true. We have two or three schools right now that have got really strict, we've, they're piloting really strict policy around those cell phones. And we see some good things in those schools for parent support, saying, thank you for doing it for us.
The challenge is we gotta, we gotta get away from the cell phones on their, being able to get their stuff done on it.
Yeah.
Because when you restrict them from it, because you've grounded them in the secondary, they can't do their homework. They can't check in. They can't find out where their next practice is, and so, if you could.
We try to add it with those promos, John.
When they ask the schools to regulate that.
Yeah, I know, but this is, this is such a part of, this is a part of.
That's our life.
I know, I know. We've got work for education around that too to do, but I know we've kept you, we were supposed to end, oh, look at that. We're supposed to end the three, and Sherri has put that so together, but we're putting a committee together, a strategic planning committee to guide this. I'd love, if you wanna attend meetings, I'll, I'll invite you. If you, if there's a committee president, there's one that you'd like to sit on that committee. Um, so they're a part of the process we go through as we set our goals. I just freaked out to follow, right? Is that okay?
If we can just be present.
Yep.
But I don't want us to have any, I mean, it's very, very.
The challenge with that, Jerry, is that's what can happen.
Yeah.
Well, he turned you, but.
I like to sit and listen.
The other option is, I can just bring you sections of it in our study sessions and get your input.
I don't wanna be on it in the recent court.
But I would prefer not to look like a board representative. I, I don't mind being there, but I don't wanna look like I'm getting outboard.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We sit towards where you're suggesting because the law.
Well, I don't have a vote in there, and so I'm just there to listen.
But you have power, whether you have a vote or not.
Yeah, you're sitting there. You're president. You have your.
It is.
It's not.
I just want the process to be transparent, so we're, it's, it's gonna be a smaller committee. Sherri will be asked, she has, she, I think, assumed that she'll be a part of it. She's got such a big role on, on this score, but we're gonna put a small group around it and then bring the pieces forward and have your eyes on them and get your take on them, okay?
I guess a suggestion might be made on my end. When I was a board president, I did serve on any boards.
Our committee.
And the reason for is because it would go that way, and Brett basically kind of did that.
Yeah.
Because presence pushes power regardless if you think you're doing it or not. You know what I mean? Simply, you make one suggestion, oh, I think that door should be green. Guess what? Next time you come in, yet I hate green. You know what I mean? It's that presence. So, the suggestion might be made, if you do baby steps in this process, can you bring the baby steps to us?
Absolutely.
Versus a grand big hall.
That's how I, that's how I'd rather do it, John.
You know, we can give it, if we haven't.
Yeah.
I'm not the expert.
Because I just, I don't wanna be left to the very end and feel like I wasn't a part of the process.
A part, a part of the process. Yeah. What we plan to do is I would bring to you, this is how it would kind of look as I see it. Here's the reason why we've set this as a focal area and a goal, because here's where, where the gap is. And Sherri's done a nice job of showing you where some of our gaps are, but, and then here's what we plan to do about that. Here's our plan of intervention, and we wanna make it so that it's not this comprehensive. Can you imagine putting this in front of a teacher?
No way.
I mean, the USB one.
No. Before me. It's just like taking a survey on a computer.
Right. I mean, that, we can have a guiding document. Right. I mean, that, we can have a guiding document like this at our end, but I would like to get something in front of our teachers that looks more like this so they understand where.
Or even the ugly one.
Yeah, yeah. A two-sider.
On a separate note, what's the latest with me in the elementary school? Where are we at with that?
So Larry is going to be involved in presenting to you the guaranteed maximum price that came out of the bid with the elementary. They just finished that process yesterday. So he is on the schedule four and you'll see a memo about it for the December sixth meeting, okay? The good news is, I can share this with you, the good news is, is the bid came in, in a place that we feel pretty good about.
Lower than what we were expecting.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's a good thing. But he's, uh, just finalizing that all.
I know, it's crazy.
Yeah, yeah. I wanna say it was right around forty-seven, wasn't it? Wasn't it Robert? Yeah, forty-seven million. So we've got a plan for the Roosevelt kids as well. Dave, if we can speak to that. I think we've shared that with you a little bit. But we've got a plan of where we're going to place those, those children and it's gonna involve four elementary.
All in the Bonneville Cone. I'm gonna divide it up pretty good. The principals are all on board.
And the parents, no?
Are we talking twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
Pretty quickly.
Or are we talking January when we start down the west inning down? That's what I thought, okay.
Will they be at those schools for the whole school year?
Whole school year. Buses will run and take them to their schools and bring them home to the Roosevelt neighborhood.
Can I, can I ask a kind of pokey question on that? Are they all kind of leaning up?
Uh, yes, all of one. Um, but they are-
Roosevelt currently is.
They're divided carefully.
By grade.
The choices by grade are divided purposefully.
Awesome.
So they'll be at Washington Terrace, Higgy, Virge Creek, and Uentum.
Yep. So you have two that aren't, I don't know.
But we will, we'll share.
But we can support those kids outside of the title?
Yes, in fact, they're kind of exciting because the, each school is getting a very purposeful distribution of the Roosevelt staff as well. Support staff, counselor, instructional coach, those kinds of things. And so, uh, they're all getting a lift, uh, based purposefully on the children that are going to their building.
Are we doing rotating librarian again?
So the lib, the librarian, they will be at the school all year. They will check out books from their school and work through that rhythm. They'll just, but adapt their master schedules. Yeah, they, they have a pretty good system. It's, it's the most that any school's getting is two grades. Some are only getting one. And so it's not, when you look at the size of Roosevelt, it's not like they're getting a huge influx of children. The most is like a hundred and fifty more kids. And my experience as a principal is that's nothing, right? That's very small numbers compared to-
You know, that's the smartest thing to do on that rebuild for safety and for confidence and, and respect. Because the, the more they're away from there, that Hogan can continue to move forward. I mean, I, I did this at municipal with my kids when we added that east wing, which was nothing more than, it was a replacement. And then we did the sand, or the Roy Junior thing, where you're building on site. I just think it's awesome, you know what I mean, that that happens that way. So to be able to, to make that happen and Kristen, thanks to her, and thanks to the teams that put that together.
There's a blessing to it too. It's been kind of cool. Mary Jo, as you know, was the one who was the principal of all of the children divided up for the kids. And Kurt was also one who was a receiving principal. So you have both perspectives in these meetings. And I shouldn't say a hundred and fifty kids is insignificant. It's not. There's definitely more little people. But it's doable. So it's, it's, they've got a good, a good plan in place. They, all of the staffs know that's coming. The next kid will be that they sent out to the families. This is, this is where they'll come. Final approval from superintendent is pending. They made a couple of adjustments on the grade the other day, so once that's-
We'd love you to, uh, we'd love to schedule a site visit for anybody at all that are interested in seeing Mountain View. Mountain View's enclosed, the heat is on, and so we thought it would be good to invite you out with the temperatures. So we would like to put a, a date on where if you'd like to come and tour it. And then Westfield, we wanna wait just a little bit longer until it's enclosed or really closed. And then we'll, we'll schedule a site visit if you'd like to come out and take a look at that school.
And then the new principal, the on-atory will be named off the January board meeting?
January, yep. So lots going on. That's why I'm worried on about the, like we've talked about with the, with the going full-scale on the junior high right now. There's just a lot of change going on right now. You think about Roosevelt, you think about Power School, you think about the junior high football. We just wanna make sure we're doing things in a way-
But as we do that, the schools won't impact, you know, the dude that's taking the biggest change. We're adding two brand-new schools on, to a high school, and we're going, they're taking-
Start that way.
You know, it just feels that way maybe because we're doing all these changes and now you're gonna go to a new school.
Their staff-
I'm okay. I'm okay either way. Because-
Everybody wants Brock and Matt, who's, has come up with absolutely what they feel best.
The staff, if we look at the way the staff would understand as they get hired, that this is what the model of this school's gonna be, right? So they would have that choice too, so.
Well, that makes sense too, so.
Yeah, that would be part of the interview process.
Maybe that speeds it up a little quicker than we had just been.
Oh, no, on the, the football committee, what's our timeframe on that? Do we have a timeframe?
Here, we could ask him. Clyde, you wanna speak to that a little bit?
I don't know if we've set a timeframe because-
I know originally, like last month, we were saying, I got the impression we wanted to do it quickly before we invested the infrastructure at the new junior high?
Yeah. I mean, we, we did say that early on, but Matt didn't realize that this is something we don't wanna rush.
Okay.
And we wanna get, you know, the committee in, in place and do it right, kind of a drift map.
So they're just gonna develop for this, this season.
From my perspective, we don't wanna buy helmets and then have-
Yeah, well, yeah.
Right, right.
So maybe by the new, I mean, more than the new year?
Yeah, yeah. I think before, we, we don't know before. Spring, yeah.
Okay, so still maybe a couple months.
Yeah. I think you probably a couple months away.
We kept you a half hour longer. I'm so sorry, but we wanted to make sure you got all that we had today. Any other questions?
Did your brain fill in sorts of that?